Let's see, Secretary, could you take the roll, please?
Chairperson Aswin.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Sadler.
Here.
Commissioner Castro.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Mondray.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Salerno.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Mr. Sadler, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pleasure, lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll take public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any manner that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the Planning Commission on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on. Possible action: Approval of the minutes of August 26, 2015. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? Does anybody note any corrections or changes?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Owen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Item number D: Modification of the agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Mr. Plomo, any changes?
No changes. We recommend taking the agenda items in the order they're on the agenda, and I'll just take this opportunity to note it is a rather long agenda tonight. We have, obviously, there's a lot of people here for various items. There are agendas on the front of the table back there, so you can kind of see the order these are going to go. The first couple items should be fairly quick. After that, kind of all bets are off as how long they're going to take, depending on, but we expect it to be a while. So if you're here for one of the last items, you may have time to go get something to eat and come back. So just, we'll take them in the order, and we do have some items where we expect to have some public comment for a while.
Thank you. Item E: Disclosures. Any member of the Commission may wish to explain any contact with an applicant or the public regarding an item on the agenda or business of the Commission. Are there any disclosures?
I might have a possible. I don't know if this would be relevant or not, but being that item six is the Silver Oaks Project, and I've been a member of the Eagle Valley Golf Committee, I don't know if that would conflict or not. I don't feel that it would, but since they're both kind of golf course facilities.
Joe Ward from the District Attorney's Office. I don't see a conflict. There's no, simply because of that relationship, no pecuniary advantage to you one way or the other with your participation and involvement in that matter.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I will just state that I have, in my professional life, I have associations with one of the applicants for the Jackson Village, but that is totally separate from my association or my job on the Planning Commission.
Joe Ward from the DA's office. And so long as that doesn't put you in a position where you would not act as a reasonable member of this body on that item, then there's no conflict.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearing. The first item on the agenda is a resolution. Resolution 2015-PC-R-1: Action to adopt Resolution 2015-PC-R-1 commending George Wendell for eight years of service on the Planning Commission. And I will read the resolution. A resolution of the Planning Commission commending George Wendell. Whereas George Wendell has unselfishly devoted his time, energy, knowledge, experience, and ability to the Carson City Planning Commission by serving as a member for eight years from June 2007 through June 2015, and whereas Carson City, its citizens, the community, and its staff have substantially benefited from the diligence and dedication of George Wendell as a planning commissioner, and whereas during his tenure, George Wendell served as chairman and vice chairman, and as chairman offered the public and all parties a fair opportunity to address all issues from the Planning Commission's consideration, and was consistently diligent in ensuring that projects met the required findings of fact and applicable development standards outlined in the Carson City Municipal Code, and whereas George Wendell is a highly respected member of the community, and his passion for smart growth and the overall quality of life for current and future generations of Carson City residents was very appreciated by the Commission and staff, and whereas George Wendell was a valuable and respected mentor for his fellow commissioners, now therefore be it resolved that the Carson City Planning Commission recognizes and commends George Wendell for a job sincerely well done, realizes that Carson City has greatly benefited from his years of public service, and that all of the commissioners and staff extend their best wishes for all his future endeavors. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I would second it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. George, could you step forward, please?
Mr. Chairman.
On behalf of the Commission, I would like to personally recognize you and thank you for your service, and we really wish you had stayed on.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the staff as well as all of the commissioners. I really enjoyed working for Carson City, and my sincere thanks to the Board of Supervisor to have enough confidence in me to appoint me to this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you'll get a plaque for this.
The next item, item F2: Special use permit, SUP-15-085, for possible action. To conduct a five-year review of a previously approved special use permit granted to George Wendell, property owner George Wendell, for a metal storage container on property zone retail commercial located at 2462 North Gate Lane, APN 002-061-32. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Susan Pansky, Planning Manager. Just a clarification, the property owner is actually Victory Christian Church, not George Wendell, but he is the applicant, and as you're aware, he's in the audience with us today. This is a storage container that is located on North Gate Lane. It's been in this location for 10 years. Per our requirements under the original special use permit, we are required to review storage containers every five years. He's up on his most recent five-year review. We haven't received any complaints about the storage container. I'll just go through some pictures showing it on the property. And we are recommending approval. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any commissioner have any questions for staff? Mr. Wendell, would you step forward, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Have you had an opportunity to read the staff report?
Yes, sir, I have. Thank you.
Then have you read the conditions of approval, and do you agree with them?
Yes, sir, I do, fully.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add to the staff report?
No, sir, I don't. I believe it's quite explanatory, and thank you, Ms. Pansky.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wendell? If not, then thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Bring it back to the Commission. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Has anyone in the public wished to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission for consideration.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve SUP-15-085, a special use permit request from George Wendell, property owner Victory Christian Center, for a five-year review of a previously approved metal storage container in the retail commercial zoning district located at 2462 North Gate Lane, APN 002-061-32, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Decision is unanimous. Thank you. Item number three: TPUD-15-069, for possible action. To consider a request from Project One, project owner Jackson Family Living Trust, 525-2000, for a tentative planned unit development of 41 single-family detached residential lots, including a special use permit to allow a residential use on property zone general commercial, and variances to allow reduction in minimum lot size, reduction of required parking, reduction of required open space, and reduction of required periphery setback on property located at 250 Eagle Station Lane, APN 009-123-38 and 39. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, this is a request for 41 single-family residential units as a part of a planned unit development located on Eagle Station Lane, as shown in the aerial I have up on the screen. This parcel, just for some history, has gone through several iterations of residential approvals, which included another planned unit development for condominiums, and most recently apartments. There is a current special use permit on the property for 72 apartments that staff is asking that the applicant or the owner rescind as a part of this approval, if they are approved by the Planning Commission and subsequently the Board. The first thing that I want to address before I go on to the next slide is the special use permit portion for a residential use in a retail general commercial zoning district. Per our code, residential uses are allowed in the commercial zoning districts with the approval of the special use permit. They're required to meet specific residential standards, including additional special use permit findings, one of them being, is this site suitable for commercial development? In this case, for this property, it's, over the past 20 years, had multiple applications on it, none of which have been a traditional retail commercial type of use. It's really not conducive to a commercial use that would have a lot of retail traffic just because of the location. It doesn't have good arterial visibility, and although it's surrounded by retail commercial uses, it really just isn't conducive to that use. So staff does agree and recommends approval of the special use permit for that use in this zoning district. Just another aerial, this is a more recent photo of what is on the site today in the most recent iteration of the apartments, I believe it was the apartments. They did start some onsite improvements, and there's some various underground that took place, as well as some grading, and some plans for building of that stuff, which obviously didn't move forward. And proposed street scape, this is the, these are the elevations of the houses that are proposed by the applicant. There are two two-story elevations and then two three-story elevations, and I'm not going to go into that in a lot of detail because the applicant's representative has a separate presentation that he'll be doing. But I did want to stop on the site plan so we could talk about the variances that the applicant is requesting. The first variance is related to the minimum lot size. So in the general commercial zoning district, the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. That's generally intended for a commercial use. So a 6,000-square-foot commercial lot would be appropriate for a commercial use with its required parking and other uses that would go along with that. Because this is being proposed as a planned unit development and a residential development at that, it's appropriate to request a reduced lot size because the 6,000 square feet in this case isn't necessary. This is an infill site. We would consider this to be an infill site and appropriate for a small lot use, given the fact that there are retail commercial uses surrounding it. And we are recommending approval of that variance. The second variance is related to parking. Per our requirements, the applicant was to provide 103 parking spaces. That's based on two spaces per unit in our standard code for a total of 82. That would be two per each unit for the 41 units. They're also proposing a reduced street width, which in our code, if they do that, they would have to provide additional parking because parking would not be allowed on the street for another 21 spaces, for a total of 103. Right now, the development's proposing 79 spaces, which is close to two spaces per unit, 1.93 spaces. Again, because this is a unique infill project that is adjacent to retail commercial, we anticipate that people that are looking to have a more walkable community with less reliance on cars would take advantage of this site. So the need for those additional spaces is probably not necessary. In addition to that, on the site plan, for the most part, every lot has a driveway that is deep enough to hold another car. We technically can't count that as a part of our requirements, but it is worth noting in this particular case that cars would be able to park in the driveways in almost every case in this site. So we are recommending approval of the variance in reduced parking. The next variance is for a reduction in open space. So in a traditional planned unit development, the required open space is 30 percent. That 30 percent can be calculated in only very specific ways, one of which is common area that would be accessible to everyone. The other is private open space could be counted up to 25 percent. So if you do that on this particular site, what it comes out to is 15 percent of the land area. Staff feels that the straight interpretation of 30 percent is really intended for much larger PUDs, not for a unique infill project like this one. So we don't feel that that open space 30 percent requirement is necessary in its traditional form, and I'd like to note that if they were allowed to count the rear yards and all of the open space that is shown on this site plan, they actually would be close to 50 percent of the site. It's 49 percent per your staff report. Definitely for the number of units in this small area, the fact that they have 50 percent open space is, it should be certainly noted, and staff is comfortable with what they're proposing for this variance. And then finally, there is a minimum periphery setback of 20 feet per the PUD requirement. So that essentially means that to the adjacent properties, the setback to each house would have to be 20 feet. Again, because this is a unique infill project that needs to utilize the land to the best of its ability, staff is comfortable with a standard rear yard setback of 10 feet as opposed to the periphery of 20. I am going to leave it there, but let the Commission know that staff is recommending approval. We feel that the application meets the required findings, and I'm going to turn it over to the applicant's representative, but I need to let you know that we have to do a quick switch in the computers so that he can do his presentation. But I am happy to answer any questions while he's doing that, if you have them.
Does anyone have a question for staff? Okay. Mr. Castro.
Ms. Pansky?
Yes.
So, okay, so normally, we're looking at 30 percent open space.
Correct.
Now, that would be common area open space, correct?
Common area and up to 25 percent of the private yards would be able to be counted.
Okay, but I mean, just in general, we're generally looking for 30 percent of common area open space.
Generally, 30 percent common area that the entire PUD would be able to use.
Okay. But in this proposal, it'd be actually closer to 49 percent if we count the backyards that are included with the common area open space. Is that correct?
If you counted everything.
Everything.
Yep. It would be 49 percent of the site.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. I guess we'll ask the applicant to step forward or to make his presentation.
Sit forward. For the record, Chris Baker, here on behalf of Project One and Jackson Family Living Trust. Again, you've heard a lot of, again, thank you, Susan, for your presentation. There was kind of a laundry list of variances, and the use of unique, the word "unique", a significant amount. And if, I'm sure you guys read the application, I'm sure you guys read the staff report, and that's actually what we're proposing. We're proposing not only a unique infill urban development, but we've chosen a very unique vehicle to entitle this project. That vehicle is the PUD ordinance. Susan had touched on how there's been various entitlements, the current one being a 72-unit apartment complex right now on the site. So obviously, the proposed 41 units is a significantly less intense use. But moreover than that is, I think, when reading the application and when drafting the application, what I was, the tone I was trying to set was, a PUD typically is a vehicle for large mixed-use projects. With those large mixed-use projects, you can allow a 30-foot setback. You can allow a 30 percent gross project area of open space because you typically have areas such as drainageways or wetlands or unbuildable hillsides. When we're talking about 3.66 acres, which is primarily flat, we don't really have the ability to meet that 30 percent. So what we tried to do was come up with a site plan that met the intent, not only of the PUD code, but of the other ordinance that indirectly we could have utilized to entitle this. So you're going to kind of see a lot of the same images. What I really want to focus on in this presentation is giving you a visual representation of what we're trying to do here, and then kind of really focus on the two hot buttons that, if I was sitting in your seat, I would have questions with, which are parking and open space. So again, this site is just located north of Eagle Station Lane. This is a view looking north. What we have here is really a graphical representation of what we're trying to do. This is that same view, so I'll go back. As you see, you've got your surrounding uses, and I'll go back and forth here. This is what we are trying to do. Again, 41 residential units, commonly known as a small lot product. This is something that has been taking off in other communities, surrounding communities and communities around the nation. This is really a product type that, it's commonly called first timers and downsizers. So we're really looking for first-time home buyers and really looking for people who are looking to downsize. So we're locating this, obviously, in close proximity to retail and commercial uses. So we're trying to create kind of a mixed-use livable community. I'm going to try and show you a video here. Hopefully, it works. And I'm not going to mess up the video by talking, so this gives you a panoramic around. And I wish I could take credit for this, but I didn't do it. It does give a pretty good representation of, that the project really won't be very dense. The sightlines are kind of maintained, as you see with parking and park-type areas.
Will it have just one difference?
Yes. I definitely couldn't have done that. Just sitting here talking.
Chris, before you go on.
Yes.
Just so that the audience knows, once the applicant has had an opportunity to make his presentation, then we'll open it up to public comment and public questions for either the Commission, or if you want to ask a question of the applicant, then you would address it to us, and we will have the applicant address that question. So if you hold off any questions until after the applicant has made his presentation, and we open it up for public comment. Thank you.
I'm sure this slide will look familiar. It is the same slide that Susan had in her presentation. As she mentioned, we will have four models, ranging in size from 1,100 square feet up to approximately 2,800 square feet, two and three-story products, two and three-bedroom units. Those square footages do include the garages. What I'd like you to pay close attention to is kind of the used materials, and as I go further into slides, but I think Project One did a really great job. Obviously, the architecture is paramount in any project, but in a project of an infill nature and an infill residential nature, it really is the showcase. So I think they've done a great job paying homage to kind of some of the historical features that you would find in historic Carson City, but kind of putting a newer, modern flair on some of those features. I have this slide in here specifically because, one, typically in an entrance like this, most of the time, you do have a rear yard facing the street. Project One did a great job here, not only providing articulation on the rear of the buildings, but wrapping around the building materials, the siding and other type materials, so it doesn't look like the back of house. I have a project by my house, and I drive by it every day, and, you know, flat stucco on the back, it's relatively unsightly. So combined with the landscaping and those architectural elements, I think they did a really good job. These are some of the design concepts, which really they based the foundation of the architecture on. Again, you'll see the porches, you'll see the variations in roof lines and materials, and a lot of this stuff is very similar to the stuff if you were driving down Currie Street or, you know, some of the historic districts in Carson. Okay. Parking. Susan did a great job on talking about the PUD requirements and Carson City code requirements and what is allowed countable parking stalls. I would like to point to the red circle there, the number of 117. If 117 cars go into that entrance, we can park 117 cars. The parking count is 79. The requirement is 103. Again, this is mainly because we don't get credit for driveways. That's a Carson City ordinance. Other municipalities, in fact, almost every other municipality, you do get credit for that, and it's counted as off-street parking. So, you know, I can get into a real long spiel of how we did it and why we did it, but the fact is, we're requesting a variance, but we actually have practical, more stalls than we need. So, and if there's further questions, I can use this very busy slide to answer those. Landscaping in open space. And the same thing here, there's a very long formula of what you can and can't count as far as open space in a PUD, upwards of only 150 square feet of rear yards. You can only count front yards if the dimensions are bigger than 20 feet. So you come up with this number of .56 acres. Again, I'd like to direct you to the number that is circled, which is 1.8 acres. The site being 3.66 acres, we're at 49 percent of private, public, common, open space. So things that are going to be green are going to be 49 percent. And again, I can get into a long, drawn-out explanation of that, but the bottom line is, things that are going to be landscaped and things that are going to be public and private open space are upwards of 1.8 acres. So with that, I'll leave you with this beautiful rendering. I agree with staff's recommendation for approval. We have read the conditions. We do agree with those. I'm asking for your vote, and I'm here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have a question for the applicant? Mr. Salerno.
I was wondering, the tree size, what tree size are you, I'll get used to that one of these days, what tree size will you be planting?
You're going to make me pull up the landscape.
Are they going to be one-gallon size, or will they be 35-gallon size?
Two and a half, I believe. I think they're two and a half. I think they're two and a half. I believe they're two-and-a-half-inch caliber on the street.
Two-and-a-half?
Inch caliber trees.
I guess I didn't quite understand the size.
Two-and-a-half-inch caliber trees.
Oh, two-and-a-half-inch caliber, okay. And will the entire site be irrigated with automatic sprinklers?
The front yards will be landscaped and maintained by the HOA, so yes. Everything except for the rear yards, which will be up to the homeowners themselves.
What's the price range of the houses?
Again, we're a little ways out. I think the market's going to determine that. I would be quite remiss to put on the record a price and have someone come back and say, hey, I thought this was only going to be this one.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Honestly, at this point, we don't know.
You don't know?
You know, we're looking at having a project complete in maybe eighteen months or so, which is a pretty aggressive schedule, so I think only time will tell. I know we're kind of heading into a market that is really geared towards a product like this, and we were trying to get this going and get this vertical, so we can, so we can hit a lot of these millennials and folks that are supposed to be coming to this region because of things east of us. So as far as price point, honestly, the short answer is, I don't know.
Well, it appears that they would be generally considered affordable housing because of the size of the units and the size of the lots and everything else. Would you like to comment on that?
No.
No?
Honestly, I can't, I can't, I don't know, so I don't know the answer to the question.
Thank you.
If I could, could I just add something to that related to, can you turn it back over? Related to the statement of affordable housing, I just want to, you know, put it out there that the term affordable housing and lower-priced housing tends to, you know, have different, a different meaning. So affordable housing typically has a definition of assisted housing for, like, Section Eight type of housing with vouchers, and assisted by government subsidies. So I don't know that that's what you intended by your question, but I just wanted to clarify that I don't believe, and the applicant didn't provide anything, to state that they were proposing what would truly be considered an affordable housing project.
Mr. Sattler.
Two or three questions on the parking. Obviously, you will allow parking in the driveways, and I compliment you on the fact that the smaller units with the single-car garages have longer driveways, so they obviously will be able to accommodate a second vehicle or whatever. My other question along that line is, if, are the people, owners allowed to use the public parking? And if they had, say, a boat or motorhome, I mean, if they can't park on the street, would they be limited as to where they could park, or whatever, if they had other vehicles?
With this, there's going to be a homeowner's association, so, you know, realistically, this, the project is geared more towards folks who wouldn't have a boat or an RV, and I'm sure the HOA, CCNRs are going to not allow that. You know, to answer your first question, yes, we have thirty-eight driveway stalls that we do not get credit for. So obviously, those will be available for guests and residents and whoever needs them. And then, we do have the, we have twenty-three common stalls, which, according to code, we actually only need twenty-one. So we do meet that, plus the driveways gets us all the way up to that one-seventeen, so.
So the homeowners, if need be, and had an extra, could use the common area if necessary?
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Castro.
For Mr. Salerno, if you look to your conceptual landscape plan, it'll answer some of the questions you had for the applicant. Just in my history, for the record, variances is a bad word. The parking doesn't concern me so much, and the open space, talk to me about the relationship of the setback from twenty to ten, and as it relates to us getting to forty-nine percent open space. Because I think that's important, but it could be a deal clincher there.
So the setback relationship for a PUD is twenty feet from the exterior boundary of the PUD. So for example, Silver Oak, the entire development, all, however many, you know, hundreds of, if not thousands of units. Yeah, let's do. The exterior boundary of that, as a whole, needs to be twenty feet. Obviously, that's, I don't know, how many acres is that? Fifteen? Six hundred acres, right? So what we're proposing to do is utilize our rear setback as our exterior boundary setback. So if we were to, to put this more in context, if we were to develop this not utilizing the PUD ordinance, we could, say, in the general commercial zone, just doing the special use permit, we could have a ten-foot setback and be not requesting a variance. Furthermore, if we were to do it in the MFA zoning district, say we did a zone change and did the same thing, we would be allowed by right to have that setback, if not a lesser setback.
What do you calculate would be the difference in open space?
Well, realistically, the twenty-foot setback would kill the project.
Okay.
I mean, that's just, that's the fact of the matter. But to put the open space more into context, if we were to go do the general commercial, just the SUP, and have to meet their landscape requirements, because there would be no open space requirement, we would only need twenty percent of the, what is it, twenty percent of the impervious site? So take, yeah, not including the buildings, right? So we're looking at, you know, half of what we're providing, if we were to do it. And furthermore, if it was at the MFA, say we were to do it under the multifamily apartment requirements, at forty-one units, we'd only need two-hundred-and-fifty square feet per unit, which is upwards of a quarter acre. So we're over double the requirements if we just had a different zoning designation. So, you know, again, taking all of the, I know variance is kind of a four-letter word, but if you put it into context of what we're trying to accomplish, if we picked a different, you know, route to do this, we wouldn't really need any of these variances.
All right, I, I like it. I'll be very honest. I like that we, you're able to accomplish the forty-nine percent, as Ms. Pansky said, of open space, and that this is forty-one, as opposed to, I believe, the previous proposal was seventy-two for this location. So this, this is a step, in my opinion, in direction of smart development. Thank you.
Mr. Sattler.
Just a comment, it was mentioned on page seven about the Millennium subdivision on lawn and Molly Drive that was constructed, and I drove through there the other day, and it looks to me very similar to probably to the sizes and construction area and kind of what you're doing, so.
Yeah, actually, we borrowed the street section. And the minimum lot size. So it is very similar. We're not trailblazers by any means, but as far as the architecture, I think Project One's kind of stepped it up a notch, to be truthful. You know, and that's a great project, and we're hoping to kind of expand on that. That was a, you know, a great seller, and hopefully this will be too.
Are there any other comments? I have one observation regarding the parking request, and that if, if this project were designed, if they were to configure the project to be a one-way circular entry/exit, then they would have adequate room for on-street parking, and, but because they're not doing that, they don't have that extra, that extra space. So I think that, you know, that what they're proposing is within reason, given the type of project that they're looking at. Okay, at this point, if there aren't any other questions for the applicant or staff, I'll open it up to the public to comment on the project. Anyone wishing to comment is invited to come forward. Please identify yourself, sign in. We'd like you to restrict your comments to three minutes, if possible. If it takes longer than that, then we can consider it. Anyone, is there anyone here who wants to comment on this project? Please step forward.
I'm scared to death.
Oh, don't worry, we don't bite.
Do you want me to sign in here?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm not used to any kind of public speaking, so this might be a real jumbled mess. I live on.
Just identify yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Edith McCartney. Okay. I live on five-two-eight Southwest Court, which is in the property directly across from the Greater Nevada Credit Union and the Gas Company. So I'm in direct line with the Eagle Road coming down. And I am concerned, first of all, those are very, very small lots that they're talking about. I live in a house, a three-bedroom, two-bath house, and I have a front yard and a backyard and side yards that I can use. And that's on, basically, the six-thousand-foot lot. Less than half of that to put a home, parking, a front yard, which they don't have, and a backyard, which, from what you're saying, you're using my backyard as part of the common area? And I, if they, people put up fences, I don't know if fences are allowed for the property, then it would not be common area. Okay? Also, their little parking, green spots there, those, that's for the extra parking. So that, how are you going to have a common area with cars parked in it? If that makes any sense?
I think we understand your comments.
Okay.
Do you have, do you have any, any other comments about this?
Well, the fact that you're putting forty-one homes in a three-point-six-six-acre area, that's, would be the difference of taking three of our houses on an area where we would have nine houses, you're putting forty-one.
You understand that they, currently, they could put seventy-three apartment units on this property?
Mm-hmm.
And they would not have to receive any additional permissions to do that?
Why don't they do that?
Because they think that the market is better for this one, I suppose.
Okay. I'm worried about the traffic and the street parking on Eagle, the street that comes through, you know, between three-ninety-five and Roop. We have a lot of traffic on that, from the shopping areas anyway, and if they were to park on that street, it would, they can't, oh, okay, that helps. Okay, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Please step forward, sign in, and state your name.
Richard Gray. I live about a half a block east of this. My main concern is what's going to happen with drainage. I know right now, it's all dirt, and when it rains, it can just soak in, but I see a lot of cement there. And we have a retention basin behind our track, behind South Point, and I've seen it in the last two months, at least twice, I've seen it half to three-quarters full already. I'm just wondering, did they make any allowances for a retention basin in that area?
Would the applicant care to address that?
You're fine right there. Where, where Ms. Pansky is pointing the arrow to, that actually is all a retention basin. Not to mention, we have, we're in discussions with and have recently acquired rights to a private drainage easement that would go to the property to the north and tie in all the way down to the street. So, yes, we have accommodated for drainage.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this item?
Yes.
My name is Paula Ray. I live at five-twenty-three Classic Court in South Point. And if you come down Eagle Station Road, my house is right at the end. And I love what, I love what the planning is. The only thing that I'm really concerned, I'm, I'm concerned about is one way in and only one way out. I feel that they should be able to have two places to get out of there. And that's what I'm really concerned about, because these are going to be very narrow streets, and you can only go in one way, and you can't turn around and go back, and if you needed an ambulance or something in there. And I do, I, I think you know what these homes are going to be worth, or what you're going to charge, because it's going to be a gated community, and that means it should be kept up, and it costs a lot of money. And so I think you're going to get, you know, I think it's going to be upscaled. I'm, I'm, I like it. I do like it. After I've heard what you've said, I just don't like the fact that there's only one way to get in that place. And I think, there already is, everybody worries about a fence, you've already got a cement wall down one side, the back, and the other side. So where you come in, I don't think you even have to worry about fencing. I don't know whether you people have looked at it yourself. I hope you all have. But just think about, think about the one way in and one way out. That's, that's the main thing I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, did, Mr. Baker, did you have another comment? Do you wish to address that?
All right, I'll hang on.
Okay. You, is there anyone else? Okay, Ms. McCarthy, you can.
I'm really sorry we had such a small showing of people, but it was because nobody notified anybody that lived inside the area, just, just the people that have their houses on three-ninety-five, I mean, on Roop. And if we had known that you weren't going to do that, if somebody had told us, we could have went out to the neighbors and talked to them. The ones I did talk to were very interested and would have liked to get here, but I, you know, I talked to them yesterday, and a lot of people can change all their plans. But I think it might have made a difference, and other people might have had things to say in regards to it, as opposed to what we said. So I'm sorry we didn't get a bigger showing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay. Mr. Baker, would you like to address the public comment?
Again, Chris Baker, Manhard Consulting. Just, just a couple points. Again, I'm hearing density. I'd like to point out that by right, currently, there can be seventy-two units allowed on the site. We are proposing forty-one. With density, obviously correlates directly to traffic, so the request before you today, in a sense, could be a traffic-saving measure. We're really almost cutting this in half. I would like to point out, the community is not going to be gated, and if someone can find us another legal access, we would love to take it, but that is our only legal point of access. The fire department has approved it, engineering has approved it. We're not talking about a very big site, so we feel, and, and staff, I don't want to speak for them, but staff feels that the ingress/egress points are adequate, so.
Mr. Sattler.
I have the same concern, as far as, in looking at it, basically, it is two ways, because you've got a double-wide entrance, so you could come out both sides if you had to, or go in both sides if you had to, correct?
We do. We have a raised median, so, you know, I guess, you know, thought would think if, with a raised median, typically, if one's blocked, you actually do have another way of ingress/egress. That's the way the fire department, I believe, thinks about it. You know, so that, that's the reason behind that, and to be honest with you, it looks nice, so.
Thank you. Okay, does any commissioner have questions or comments?
Elise Monroy, for the record, no question, I guess, just comment. I came, well, I had concerns about the parking, and I'd like to thank you for addressing those in your, in the documents you provided, and then your discussion today. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that, and then I appreciate the individuals that came forward with public comment.
Are there any other questions? I guess not. I guess not. Well, if there aren't any other questions or comments, I think what we should do is to consider this in two stages. The first being to determine whether or not the PUD, whether or not we should grant the special use permit for the residential and general commercial zoning district. And then consider the variances one by one before actually making a motion. So, and just for discussion purposes. So I would like to, you know, does anybody have any questions regarding the findings presented by the staff for approval of a residential use as a conditional use in the commercial zoning district? Okay. Well, I think that, just to be clear in the record, I think that it is the consensus of the commission that the commission accepts the findings contained in the staff report regarding the special use permit for residential and a general commercial zoning district. And we'll move on to the variances, variance for the reduction in the minimum lot size. You've heard the applicant and staff give their reasons for approval of this. Does anyone have any issues or concerns about this item?
I would just like to make a statement.
Go ahead.
It seems to me that this is a reasonable use with the density that is proposed as
opposed to what could have been built if they chose to go the apartment route. And I think that the architecture looks very nice, very compatible with what we'd like to see for this type of housing in this area. That's at least my opinion. And I think they've done a nice job, and I think it'd be a nice place to live.
Thank you. Regarding the reduction in minimum lot size, my comment is that, given that this is a reduction in the general density of what they have already been allowed, that the lot size is really not an issue, or shouldn't be an issue. The 72 units of apartments would pencil out to a much smaller lot size than what is being proposed here. So I assume that it is the consensus of the commission that the variance for minimum lot size should be granted. Reduction in the required parking, we've had some discussion about that already, so I, again, unless there is any major objection to that, I'll assume that that is also the consensus. The reduction in the required open space, there has been some discussion on that. I think that, my personal opinion is that, given the size of this particular development and its location within a commercial district warrants the allowance for the reduction in required open space. So, again...
Any more for a motion?
Not one more. And then for the variance for the reduction in the required periphery setback, again, my observation on this is that if this were a commercial subdivision, a commercial subdivision is a legal term, where a commercial lot can be subdivided into commercial uses, there is no minimum lot size for those individual uses within a commercial subdivision. And this is a very similar type of situation. It is in a commercial district, the overall lot size of three-plus acres certainly meets the 6,000-square-foot limit. And this would be very similar to subdividing a commercial lot into individual storefronts and store spaces. So, again, I didn't hear any specific comments on this one, and I think that we are all in agreement. So at this time, I would like to entertain a motion. Mr. Sattler?
I move to recommend approval of TPUD-15-069, tentative plan unit development consisting of 41 single-family detached residential lots to the Board of Supervisors, including approval of the special use permit to allow a residential use on property zone general commercial, and variances to allow reduction in the minimum lot size, reduction in the required parking, reduction of the required open space, and reduction of the required primary setback on property located 250 Eagle Station Lane, APNs 009-123-38 and 39, based on the findings and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in the staff report.
I'll second it. I would like to just add, if I may, at this point in time, that I think it's a very reasonable use for this piece of property that really doesn't make good sense as bona fide commercial property because of the location of it, and this is a very good use of that property.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If they're not, I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And for the record, this will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Thursday, October 15th.
Moving on to item... Item number four, special use permit SUP-15-079 for possible action. To consider a request from Pam McIntosh, property owner Karen L. Haupt, for a special use permit to allow the cumulative square footage of accessory structures on the property to exceed 75% of the size of the main residence on property zone, single-family, one-acre, SF1A, located at 4589 Silver Sage Drive, APN 009-176-05. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to note for the record before I start this presentation, we did receive two items as lead information for this project. There is a letter of objection with a petition attached that was received, and also a separate email, or two separate emails that were received, also an objection to the proposed project. So as the chairman mentioned, this is a request from applicant Pam McIntosh to exceed the cumulative accessory structure square footage of 75% of the size of the main structure. This property is located on the corner of Silver Sage Drive and East Willow, as shown on the aerial that I have on the screen now. The property size is 1.3 acres, which is a little bit larger than the typical single-family one-acre lot size that is in this area. Just a few photos of the property itself. This is a view of the front of the house, a view of the side on the west, the western side, the street side, a view of the driveway access. In the photo, it's noted that the structure would be placed north and east on the right side at 1.40 feet north of the existing fence that you see on the right side of this photo. And then a view from the southeast, the structure would be west of this point. And then another view of the parcel, the structure would be 40 feet north of this fence in this location. This is a site plan showing the proposed location of the structure. You can see that the house is located on the western side of the property. The proposed structure is located about halfway down. There is an existing shed, an existing wellhouse adjacent to the proposed location of this structure, and an existing shed as well closer to the house. The structure that's being proposed is an open-ended metal structure, as shown in this slide that I have up here. Staff is recommending approval, but I would like to note for the record that, as this is a residential area, there are no specific development standards for the structures that are within residential areas unless they're part of multifamily, which this is not. So there is no specific requirement. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Ms. Monroy?
I have a question. Okay. And I'm not sure if you have any information on any of the surrounding properties, but I drove by, and it looks like a number of the properties, and I don't know if it would be helpful to go to the first picture of the parcel. Okay. So I guess it would be north. It looks like there's an accessory building. It looks like horse stables. And then there's another building that looks like a big metal shed over here, and then there's another building that looks like a shed over there. And I was wondering if those had to go through the special use permit process?
So how it works in our code is if the structure is more than 75% of the main structure, then yes, or the cumulative square footage. If it's between 50% and 75%, it goes through an administrative permit, which goes in front of a hearings officer, but it's also a public hearing, not unlike this. It's just not in front of a full commission. These types of accessory structures are very common in the single-family, one-acre district because of the size of the lot and generally the uses associated with them.
I'd just like to clarify also that the size of all of the accessory structures is included. It's a cumulative size. It's not any individual... If the individual building is more than 50% of the size, then that would need a special use permit.
Okay.
I want to add that, too. It's only been about 10 to 12 or 15 years that this code has been effect, even requiring special use permit for over 75%. So there's a lot, obviously, a lot of construction that occurred in Carson City before then. So it's possible there's larger structures that never did get a special use permit because they were before the regulation.
Thank you for the clarification.
I went by there also, and just wanted to clarify, I noticed there were several vehicles along the driveway area in the back. Obviously, these are the vehicles that he's concerned about. He wouldn't even have to come to us if it was not for the structure. If he just wanted to work on those in his garage or in the yard or whatever, he'd have no problem doing that. And also, I believe, wasn't it just a couple months ago, just down the street, we approved a similar situation for someone putting a large building for a motorhome and everything in the back? It was in the same area?
That was...
Yeah.
We did.
I wasn't here for that one. Sorry, I don't remember.
Was it a similar commercial-looking structure which is suggested?
I believe if memory serves me right, it was going to be for storage of a motorhome and other vehicles. It was enclosed.
Stick-built or commercial?
I believe it was stick-built. It was going to be, but it was larger than the house, so that we had to approve it.
Are there any other... Go ahead.
I drove by the house also, looked at over the lot. I'm a little bit concerned, maybe a lot concerned, that, you know, it is a metal quonset hut-type structure. I looked at the other accessory buildings in the area, and they're generally stick-built. And they kind of fit in, you know, to the community. And I feel a little bit uncomfortable with this type of structure for that purpose in this location.
Well, I just want to point out that the issue that we are addressing is the excess building area. We are determining whether it is appropriate here. There are no design guidelines for residential structures in this zoning district. So technically, we can't consider the structure itself. We could place conditions on it. We could determine that the excess building area was not appropriate. They would have to reduce it to below the 75% of the main structure. So there are ways of addressing it, but we cannot address the actual design of the structure itself.
I have a comment, then. Elise Monroy, for the record. Okay, so I had concerns regarding the look of the structure. It looks commercial. I know we can't consider that. But I also had concerns about the fact that this won't just be 75% of the primary structure. Total accessory on this, total accessory building now on this lot will be 118% of the primary structure. Now, in reviewing staff findings, the first question is, will this be consistent with master plan elements? So I reviewed, as I'm sure you all did, the Chapter III, the balanced land use planning, and it notes here that the goal that this special use permit, I guess, meets would be water conservation. And it meets that goal because no one's going to live there, and it doesn't need utilities. It's an accessory structure. So I just have concerns about the fact that this won't be just 75%. It'll be 118% accessory structure on this. And I don't know that it, only meeting that one aspect of the master plan, I don't know, it just doesn't sit well, so...
Okay, thank you. I mean, I think that is what we are considering. We are considering whether or not we should approve the expansion of beyond the 75%.
Well beyond 75%.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Please sign in and state your name for the record.
Sign?
Yes.
Do you need him on here also?
If he's going to address, if he's going to address the commission, then he should sign in.
He can answer the questions better than I can. He lives there.
So just while they're signing in, I just wanted to state for the record, so as it relates to this permit, if the size is of concern, as a part of this special use permit, it could be mitigated by additional visual improvements, if you will, to the structure. So you can consider that as a part of this permit today. But Chairman Swine did state correctly that we have no residential design standards that they would be required to follow specifically. It would be whatever you placed on them as a part of this permit, so...
Okay. I'm Pam McIntosh.
Have you had an opportunity to read the staff report?
Yep, pretty much, I did, yes.
Okay. And do you agree with the conditions that they are recommending? Not to say that there may not be other conditions placed on this, but the staff is...
Yeah. As far as what I could read, they really had no objections.
Okay. Do you have any comments or additional comments other than what the staff has already...
No, other than the fact that this piece of property has no garage or a place to do anything that, you know, requires servicing of a vehicle or doing hobbies or anything. So this is just a structure that my sister, Karen Haupt, and my son, Jason, he lives there. He rents the property. I'm the POA for the property. And we just decided that it would improve the value of the property to put up a structure that you could do things like that in.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Have you considered doing a stick-built structure of the same size?
Jason McIntosh speaking. Cost-effective-wise?
Could you speak into the microphone?
Cost-effective-wise, I really can't afford the stick structure, but I got a really good deal on the steel building, and I really honestly didn't think that anybody... good deal on the steel building, and I really honestly didn't think that anybody would have a problem with it. So, I just go in ahead and, you know, went down the right channels and applied for our zoning variance changes and all that good stuff. I've already started to erect a six-foot fence around the back half of the property when we got the notice from Code...
Code enforcement.
Excuse me, code enforcement. And doing the best I can to stick within the guidelines of Carson City.
Where are you going to put down a concrete slab?
Oh, yes.
The building does rest on a concrete slab, yes.
The new building would be on a concrete slab.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sadler.
Just a comment, looking at the drawings, basically, the open ends are going to be facing the back of your house and the back of your lot. So, the view from the street's going to be the sides of the building.
Correct.
So, in essence, you'll have, and you're 179 feet back to the back of your property and 170 feet to the house. So, and right now, I notice there are quite a collection, I think BW Bug and a few other classical cars there.
Yes, sir.
And probably nice to have inside out of the weather as well, not only to work on, but just to preserve.
I would quite enjoy that, enjoy that, so.
Thank you. Just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments at this point? Okay. Do you have anything else to add regarding the application?
I don't think so. Do you?
Okay. All right.
One more question, if I may. Were you considering trees or plant material around the structure that would mitigate the appearance, you know, from the neighbors?
Down the south side of the property at a later date. I was planning on putting some trees down the south fence.
At a later date?
At a later date. I'm kind of a little bit strapped on cash after this fence, you know.
Thank you.
Put my concrete money back.
Okay. Well, thank you. We will be happy to consider your application. At this point, we're going to open it up to public comment. Anyone, anyone from the public wishing to address this issue is welcome to step forward. Please sign in, state your name, and if possible, restrict your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and the commission. My name is Susan Singer Whiteall, and my address is 670 East Willow Street. And I live directly to the east, and I'm the adjacent property owner. I face Willow Street, and center is the side of my property. And I have a number of extreme concerns. I've gone through this Carson City master plan, and in Chapter Six, it talks about livable neighborhoods and activity centers and guiding principle six, quality, design, and development. Carson City will project a positive image for the community by promoting a high standard of design. A quonset hut, and I saw the materials being delivered, it is a galvanized corrugated metal structure. And, excuse me, please forgive me for not including the exhibit in the packet that I left. I had one week to prepare it. But as most of you know, a quonset hut is basically a couple of types, either strictly rounded or the slightly angular roofline. So, then, that's not a quality structure by the city's master plan. I don't believe that that's promoting quality of design and development within our residential neighborhood. And also, the city's master plan talks about 6.2A neighborhood compatibility. And I went around our neighborhood, so everything to the east of Silver Sage primarily has a different type of structure. There are a few oversized metal structures to the west side of Silver Sage, which is starting to promote some industrial feeling in our neighborhood because it is not compatible with... And you can pass this around if you want. So, goal 9.3 is maintain the quality and character of established neighborhoods. I, to me, this is addressing specifically, talks quality of design and development. And the municipal code references numerous times to follow the master plan. And I believe it was in the wisdom of your predecessors and perhaps some of you were actively integrating and deciding upon different revisions to the city's master plan. So, the municipal code talks about accessory buildings and conditional uses, subordinate primary use on the same lot, including but not limited to storage, tool shop, children's playhouse, guest buildings, greenhouse, garage, swimming pools, and other types of structures. So, in our single-family one-acre zoning, we are farm accessory structures. We can have accessory structures. And I believe if you look at the petition and the information I submitted, that it clearly outlines what type of structures and the uses are allowed within our neighborhood. With the advent of the freeway construction, we're now really creating a northerly limit for our residential neighborhood, at least as far as the perception of the community. Our neighborhood is now in an upward mobility. People are investing more money. We're experiencing gentrification of our neighborhood. I was an appraiser for over eight years, worked for NDOT, buying and selling properties, also worked for the Attorney General's Office in condemnation and helping to prepare condemnation and inverse condemnation cases where there is a demise of value in property through actions of a municipality or government agency. So, further, a junkyard is, means according to definition, any space used for collecting storage, abandonment, or sale of junk, wastepaper, rags, scrap metal, discarded material, or similar waste, including the dismantling, demolition, or abandonment of automobiles, other vehicles, machinery, or parts, or placement of one or more dismantled or partially dismantled vehicles. The vehicles in which you saw the photo are partially dismantled. They're not particularly functional. So, the approval of this permit for a 1,500-square-foot garage, galvanized metal structure, is, as the applicant said, and I believe that they're fine people, I have not had any communication directly with them. Mr. McIntosh seems like a fine gentleman. So, there's nothing personal. I'm strictly concerned about the development of my neighborhood, and I have invested a lot of money in my property to have a industrial-type use and a industrial-type building that's extremely large and in excess of the allowable square footage built right next to my property. So, there was limited industrial use, talks about conditional uses in the industrial district which require the approval of a special use permit. Auto body repair, painting, towing, and vehicles must be enclosed within a site obscured area. One of the functions I had while I worked for NDOT was to issue citations for junkyards along our state highway because of the Beautification Act. So, I'm very familiar with what constitutes a junkyard and the appearance of a junkyard. Conditional uses in the single-family one-acre neighborhood are bed and breakfast inns, childcare, church, municipal well facility, school, temporary track sales office, and a utility substation which usually supplements and helps provide, of course, utilities to a particular neighborhood. I'd like to point out that Karen Haupt is the owner of the property. In and about 2009, she inherited the property and within a year moved to Oregon, does not live on the premises, and is, I haven't spoken with her. She's apparently not particularly accessible, or at least some of us in the neighborhood don't know how to contact her. Pam McIntosh, who was up here, she is a trustee. The property is held in a family trust under Karen's name. Jason is, as he stated, is a renter. There's no monetary investment in that property for either Pam or Jason. I have a huge investment in my property. Many of the neighbors also have a huge investment. I spoke with a number of neighbors when I canvassed to get petitions, and was really quite shocked at the amount of money people have been spending to improve the quality of the neighborhood overall. And that's why I say that there is a gentrification occurring. A galvanized quonset hut does not support that gentrification and improvement of the neighborhood, neither does it support the master plan. I spoke with Kevin McCoy from the city code enforcement, and he's the senior compliance officer, I'm sure you know him, and he said he talked to Jason and that the intended use for the structure is to store and rehabilitate the salvaged vehicles. The work to restore these vehicles involves intense sanding, grinding, welding, engine repair, and painting. The wind blows from the west to the east. I'm the one who will have the most effect. And I pose to you, if you are going to buy a home to live in that's $300,000, $400,000, and you have the choice of two properties that are basically identical, one is in a conforming neighborhood with homes that are similar, basically quiet, maybe swimming pools or normal garage structures, they all look similar, and then there's another property that you're considering, and right next door to it is a quonset hut where they're doing auto body repair, which one are you going to buy?
We are, we're not discussing uses of the land at this point. We are discussing the, the, the structure itself.
Okay. The structure itself opens the door for multiple uses which are non-conforming with the municipal code and the zoning. It is oversized, which thus contributes to opening the door for any number of uses that do not fall within the zoning or the municipal code.
Until, until an actual use is proposed, other than hobby use, I, we are going to have to look at the structure itself.
So...
In accordance with the code.
So, if you look at the structure itself and the master plan, that type of structure and the extent of the square footage, it is completely non-conforming.
Okay.
And that concludes my statements.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this issue?
Chair.
I see an awful lot of people out there.
Chair, I have an addition.
Okay. Go ahead.
Staff, do we know by any chance what percentage of, so in the surrounding properties, and I don't even know if this question's going to make sense, so bear with me. Do we know what percentage of the primary residence is accessory buildings in any of the surrounding properties?
I don't have that information, no. But if you look at the aerial, you can see in several locations accessory structures do exist. I don't just, I just don't have a percentage for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there, are there any other questions or comments? Okay. I have, I have a few observations. As I said before, this application, we are considering the size of the building over the allowed coverage of the, of the property. The style of the building, and while I sympathize 100%, and I, and I would really encourage the applicant to consider a different style of building, I don't think that within the code or even the master plan, because the master plan doesn't, it does not have a, have legal bearing and, over the, over the code. And the code allows this type of structure because it doesn't not allow it. However, that being said, I think that it is appropriate for us to look at modifications to the request, such as to require that it be painted neutral colors, that we could require screening to, to screen it from adjacent properties, screening either by mechanical means like fencing or by landscaping with trees and shrubs. As far as the, the complaint that it will be, that it is a junkyard, that is, that's a Carson City code enforcement issue. It's not an issue that comes before the planning commission. And I think that's all I have. My recommendation would be that, you know, if we were going to approve this, that we would specify a, a level of landscaping that would screen it from the adjacent properties and from view from the street. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. So, Elise Monroy for the record. I, so, I thought a lot about this, and I think that, and I know that we can only consider the use of the land. We technically can't talk about how the building looks, right? We can't consider that in our decision?
No, we can.
Okay.
We cannot say that a quonset hut is not an appropriate use, structure.
So, I think that that type of building, though, would change the character in this neighborhood, and that's my concern. I don't know, in looking at the aerial, I drove around, and it really is a lovely neighborhood. I drove around today, and I don't know that adding the addition of this type of accessory building, I don't, I think the, I think the look of the steel corrugated metal, whatever this is, building, I think that would change the characteristics of the neighborhood, which is one of the, the main problems that I have. And I also think that this much accessory building on a lot seems excessive. So, those are my only concerns.
Are there any other comments?
If I, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm so rude. But I, I think that I, I'd feel a little less hesitant if we, if there was a condition or something about screening it from view or requiring landscape, but I think that would then go against the water conservation thing that satisfies the master plan. So, I think we'd have to look at that.
Okay. Mr. Slatter.
If we look at the size of the main structure, which is 1,572 square feet, and we multiply that times .75, we come up with 1,179 feet allowable. Is that correct? Total allowable, less the amount of, of current structures, accessory structures that are on the, on the property, and that is 288 square feet. So, basically, if we were to go by the law as it is now, all you would be allowed would be 891 square feet, not 1,500 square feet on the property. So, really, that's what we're talking about. That's the difference. I have, you know, this is a nice neighborhood, and I, I don't feel comfortable with approving an excess large structure on the property, most particularly because... an excess large structure on the property, most particularly because of the way it will look. If it were a stick structure that was nicely designed, I would probably look at it differently. I would feel it'd be more compatible. But I can't, I couldn't go along with increasing the allowable size of it to 1,500 square feet, when in fact, that's way larger. When there's only 891 square feet, that's really available for additional structure such as this.
As a question, would you approve it with this structure, if it was a 800 square foot structure?
Well, I think I wouldn't have any choice. I think that it would then comply with the ordinance, and certainly I would, yes. So, if they put up a Quonset hut that was 891 square feet, not any larger than that, I don't think that we would have the right to do anything but approve it. But the fact that it is, they're asking for something much larger, and the neighborhood feels the way they do about it, and I can understand that they would feel that way. If I lived there, I would feel the same. But that's where I come from.
Okay, are there any other comments?
First of all, I thank you for your public comment. I do have to agree with the other commissioners. On the other hand, right now, there's a bunch of empty cars out there, and they're not working. And I don't know, I didn't drive by the particular site, but I'm very familiar with the area. I don't know if them being in, even if it is a Quonset hut, something would not clean up the yard and make it look better. This is awfully large. I think that's what our concern is right now, is that it is just really a lot larger than is allowed, and it is a Quonset hut, it's not a stick figure. On the other hand, it might be nice to have all those cars out there in some place and not out in the yard. And that's just my personal comment.
Well, I just, if I may, I just feel like we can't use that as a reason, otherwise people could just load their yard with cars, and we would then approve a structure, you know, to house it. But 891 square feet, that's larger than two normal-sized garages. A normal garage is 20 by 20, which is 400 square feet. This is 891. That would be allowable without addressing the matter to us.
Okay, are there any other...go ahead.
But at 891 square feet to staff, that would still have to come before a committee or board or something, correct?
If 891 is at the 50% or just...so if it's 50, up to 50% would not come in front of any kind of public hearing board.
But if we have 891 plus the 200 and some of the there, I think you are using a 75% figure.
Well, yes, I use 75% of the size of the structure, the house. That gives us, what is it? That structure's 1,572 square feet, so 75% of that is 1,179 square feet, which would be the allowable total amount of accessory building allowed on the property.
That would not have to come to us, but it would still have to go to committee because it's over 50%.
Well, you know, they already have a couple hundred square feet, 288 square feet of accessory building. They've got two little buildings, you know, there on the property. So, you add that to it, and so really, there's only another 891 square feet available without coming to us for an increase.
But anything over 50% would have to go before the board you discussed, correct?
That's correct. So, 700, anything up to 786 square feet would be allowed by right without an administrative permit or a special use permit. Above that, between 50% and 75%, it goes in front of the hearings officer for approval in a public hearing, and then above 75%, it comes to the planning commission.
And just one other further comment. I did drive by and look back, and along the driveway, the cars are lined up neatly along the driveway. They're not like scattered all over. It's, and he's looking, like I had said, if I was out there, I'd rather see them under some kind of structure than sitting out in the driveway in any order, but just my opinion.
Just looking at the aerial photograph, it seems to me that there are multiple structures there that exceed the 75%. So, in terms of neighborhood character, I'm not so sure that the...
I have a comment, then, sorry.
Can I finish?
Yeah, of course.
I'm not so sure that the 75% is unreasonable, but 118% might be. And that's just my observation.
So, I think that 75% would be reasonable, but I'd also like to note that one of the buildings that backs up against the property line is, it looks to me, when I drove by, like a metal, looks like, I think it houses horses, and it's painted a neutral color, and...but it's also that corrugated metal. And I think the painting makes it look like it blends in a little bit more, so I'd be open to that also. But 75%, I think would be a lot more reasonable than the 118. So, thank you, Chair.
So, are there any other discussion? Anybody want to suggest additional conditions that we might place on this, or limitations? What would be a maximum that you would be comfortable with? If you would be comfortable at all with exceeding the 75%?
I'm not sure if there was any plans or anything to paint the structure. I don't know if that was...
I think that was a condition, to paint the structure a neutral color.
That is in here, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, that's one of the conditions.
Okay, I thought so, thank you.
And is the structure, as I understand it, already purchased and there?
I think that that's irrelevant. It's not, it hasn't been put up yet, and I didn't see a slab there, so the pieces might be there. Well, I'll throw out some potential additional conditions. I'd like to add that the area be landscaped to screen the structure from Willow Street and adjacent properties, and another condition that, should this be approved, that there would be no outside storage of unregistered and/or inoperable vehicles as a condition. That there would be no outside storage of unregistered and/or inoperable vehicles.
So, Lee Plamow, community development director, I'd be careful about starting to rewrite the municipal code about what vehicles a person's allowed to have.
This is, but I'm not saying that he can't have them, but we are talking about storage, and this is a, the intent of the building is for storage of vehicles. It is a special use permit after all. But I understand your concern. And if the district attorney wants to weigh in...
Joe Ward from the DA's office. You can impose any conditions that you want to on a motion, and I don't see a real obstacle to the imposition of that condition, if that's what you want to propose in your motion. I don't see an obstacle to imposing such a condition.
Thank you.
Chair, I hate to be the squeaky wheel. I'm such a, I'm the worst. So, I just have concerns about approving 118% of this, of the primary. That just doesn't sit well with me, so...but unfortunately, I don't know what else to propose to mitigate my concern, but it just doesn't sit well, so, sorry.
Would you, well, we could get a motion and then discuss it, or we could...
Well, I think that's...sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
I was just going to suggest maybe we should talk to the applicant to see what they're willing to do, because basically where we're at is, you're not going to get this structure this size, you're going to have to start all over. What, you know, maybe call up the applicant and ask them some questions again.
Would the applicant come forward?
Please, we'll accept the commission.
So, you've heard the discussion?
Yes, sir.
And the concern is the excess size of the structure, as well as the appearance, but I think that, you know, with the paint, it seems to be at least a consensus that with the painting and landscaping, that the structure itself might be acceptable.
Well, I definitely plan on painting it, because I don't want to stare at a galvanized building either.
But it's the actual size of the building, and you understand that what you're requesting is almost twice what you...
Are allowed.
Would be allowed.
Correct.
Would you consider a smaller size?
I can make it shorter.
Okay.
Pretty flexible. I'm really easy.
Well, that's the advantage of Quonset huts, you can...
Correct. Take pieces out.
Take pieces out.
This way, not so much.
I'd like to ask one question, if you're done with your question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you consider, I mean, if you feel like you must have a 1,500 square foot structure, would you consider doing it stick-built?
Do you know someone that'll buy my building?
Pardon?
Do you know someone that might buy it?
The building we...
I already purchased it. I can make it smaller, but I can't change it to wood.
Well, apparently, apparently, you would like to get all those cars inside of this structure. Maybe not all of them, I don't think you can get them all in.
Oh, yeah.
But you can get most of them inside, I would think. But if you did do it as a stick structure that would be more compatible with the neighborhood, I could go along with an oversized accessory building on the property.
Commissioner, with all due respect, this gentleman, he went out and purchased this item, all right? And it's, to do it to full size, it's way bigger than what's allowed. I can't speak for everybody, but it seems the opinion is that it's too big. So, the point is, is how much smaller could you go to, and what would be the percentage that this commission would be willing to accept as a condition for him to move forward, or he's going to have to start all over.
Mr. Sattler.
Well, we're kind of discussing two things, and one of them is its size, and the other, if the condition is that no vehicles can be outside, one of the conditions, and the fact that it's hidden with some landscaping and painted, et cetera. I mean, if you start making it smaller, then you can't get all your vehicles in. So, I'm thinking that either one or the other, maybe painted, landscaped to where you don't see it, et cetera.
Okay, question.
As is, or whatever.
We are erecting and have erected over a six-foot fence along the whole Willow Street side, and it's going to go down the driveway and on the whole east side of the property.
And this building is approximately 15-foot high to its crown, so...
Right.
Some trees along there, shrubs, whatever, would probably hide it fairly quickly. But to be asking to downsize and maybe change the other conditions, is it one or the other, or what are we kind of looking for?
I'm looking for what your desire is, what you might propose.
I just don't want to tie his hands to the fact that we're going to make him shorten it, and then say he's not going to be able to have any cars outside, because then it may not serve his purpose.
Well, how would you modify it, then? How would you modify...
My suggestion would be to leave it the size it is with the landscaping and the other conditions, and the painting, and no vehicles outside is a possible alternative.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments on this?
I struggle with agreeing to the size, especially because his neighbors and the petition, the letter that's been written, and we have to, it's my opinion, we have to think of our community as a whole and those residents. So, for me, I struggle with allowing the size. If there was a compromise on the size, and then there was the addition of conditions of the landscaping and the vehicles and all that, I would consider that. But right now, for me, if the size doesn't change more and to conform to what's regulation, that's what I...
What size are the panels?
The panels are 24-inch.
So, there are two-foot sections?
Correct.
Okay, so you could reduce it by two feet?
At a time.
So...
My question, too, would be, across the street from you, how large is that metal building that's sitting behind the house on East Willow?
Oh, that one's got six bays in it, so it's probably right around 3,000 square feet.
And the one next to it.
And there's one catty corner, if you see where the subject parcel, the little tag is, that one right directly above that is right around 2,000 square feet. So, I mean, it's, there's some pretty huge steel structures in the... 4,000?
Yeah, 4,400.
There you are.
Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion at this point.
Well, let's see.
Up.
I'd like to address the chair, please.
Okay, one, for one minute. Please step forward, please step forward.
The other oversized metal buildings are not Quonset huts. They are more of a structural, at least in appearance, more conforming, and they're definitely cost more to construct. One neighbor spent over $100,000 constructing his.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Sattler.
Can you give us something to try?
Go ahead.
So, I should read the recommendation and then be...
Whatever.
To...
Yep.
I'll try this. I move to approve SUP-15-079, a special use permit request, allowing a cumulative square footage of an accessory structure on property to exceed 75% of the size of the main residence on property zone, single-family, one acre, located at 4589 Silver Sage Drive, APN 009-176-05, based on the findings, on the conditions, findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report, adding that the structure would be landscaped, and that once the structure was built, that no other vehicles would be allowed on the property that were not registered or not running. They would all be in the structure. Is that sufficient?
I think so. I think, just pointing out that the conditions stipulate that the structure can't exceed 1,500 square feet, and that it can't exceed the height of 16 feet.
Yeah.
And plus, it would have to be painted and with all the others.
Neutral on the earth, tonal material existing in the primary structure in the site.
Right. Well, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Unfortunately, I can't, I can't agree to the motion. I just feel that it's too large, and it is not of, it'll take years perhaps for the landscaping to grow up, to, you cover it. So, I won't vote for the motion.
Are there any other, any other discussion? Well, at this point, I would call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, one, two, three. So, motion fails. There was three ayes. That was Mr. Sattler, Mr. Owen.
He didn't go if he got nays or abstentions.
Oh, okay, I will take, all those opposed signify by saying no.
Nay, no.
Four noes, and no abstentions. So, it is a four to three, the motion fails. I would entertain additional motion. Does anybody care to make a motion?
I don't, my problem, Elise Monroy for the record, my problem is the size. If we could, and I understand, Commissioner Sattler, the issue with tying hands in term, you know, make it smaller, but you can't put your cars outside. I get that. So, but I just can't agree to the size. So, not that I wouldn't agree to any structure, that's not the case. I would agree to a smaller structure, for sure.
Do you have a recommended size?
Somewhere closer to 75, even 80% of the primary structure, I think I'd be, but square footage, I don't know.
Well, I think you could specify a percentage.
Closer, I think closer to 75 or 80%, I'd feel a little more comfortable. So...
What would that be?
That's what it currently is, 75%.
The current structure? There isn't a structure currently.
Well, there's the house.
No, you don't count the house.
Well, that's how we turn that down. Size is allowed.
The additional, the accessory structures on the lot currently do not exceed 50%, or they exceed 50%, but they don't exceed 75%. So he has some leeway.
Also, are we talking about 75% of 1,500? Is that what we're talking about?
With that staff.
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Let's...
So 75% of the 1,572, which is the primary structure, is 1,179. 80%... Hang on.
You have to subtract out the existing accessory structures, okay?
Well, it's cumulative.
Right.
Cumulative square footage.
Right, okay.
So, that would be a cumulative allowance for the 1,179.
1,179.
And 80% is 1,257.6, so you could round it up to 1,258 for 80% if you felt that was appropriate.
And how many square feet are their existing accessory?
288, I believe.
288 square feet are existing on the property.
So the 1,158 minus 288...
970.
Would be the maximum size at 80.
More comfortable with that.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I will try.
Is that acceptable?
Well, before, would that be acceptable to the applicant? To reduce the size of the structure to 900 and what?
80.
980 square feet?
For reference, the 30-foot width would stay. 980 square feet is 30 by 32. So we're all doing good math here today.
Thank you.
That's pretty much the storage portion of the structure.
Could you just come forward, please?
Sorry about that. Yeah, I, I mean, I have to have this structure, and if I gotta go smaller, I guess I'm gonna have to go smaller.
Okay.
No, whatever pleases it, you know, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, go ahead and make your motion.
Okay.
Whoops.
I just, I know how to read, Mr. Plimmell. Could we just get any input from you, Mr. Plimmell?
No, my comment was about the storage, so you have required him to keep all unregistered vehicles, so you can't make...
We can...
Yeah, so think about that condition as well, I guess. But I think Joe's still comfortable with it. He's compliant now, I mean, he's had code enforcement complaints on it before, but there is permitted, you're permitted to work on classic cars that are unregistered, so... Yeah, that was my only comment.
Let me just add to that. I agree, and he is, I just found out, compliant with code enforcement. You can make a condition any way you want to condition any application, but you can also take the current compliance into consideration.
Okay, Mr. Sattler.
Another possible question, I don't know what the other two structures are, the 288 square feet, but maybe you could trade off some of that.
Two of them are storage, just storage sheds, and the third is actually my wellhouse. I can remove the two other structures after the structure is built, but that's also housing some of my equipment and tools and whatnot in them, so I can't remove them until said structure is up to house this equipment.
So there's a possibility, we could stipulate if those came down, this could be a little larger, correct?
I'd be comfortable with that.
That's just another solution to get you more into one building, to give you a larger building footprint there by getting rid of the other structures when the building is complete. Is that a possibility? So... That would allow him to roughly, I don't know, how big's your well building?
10 by six, 6 by, yeah, 10 by six.
So that's only 60 square feet, so you're gaining 240. Back the 880 and 240 is back over 1,000, about 1,000-plus square feet. Just, I don't know if that would work.
I'm up for something.
Yeah, so...
837, yeah.
So roughly 1,100, possibly, totals.
I don't think so, not that big. I think, because if we're talking to 75%, are we talking to 80%?
80% was 1258.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Don't talk back and forth.
Just, don't talk.
Okay. If we're talking 75% of 1,500, then by the time we take that number and we deduct the 288, the resultant is 837 square feet, 837. If you add them back in, of course, you've got, you know, plus 288, you've got 1,125. You're right.
But, and if you took the 80%, we were looking at 1258. Minus the 250 roughly would leave him, yeah, not even, minus 60 square feet, he'd be almost 1,200 square feet. That'd be 10 by 6, 6 by 10 for the wellhouse. If the other two were down, he would be right close to 1,200 square feet.
Okay, so I would be, Elise Monroy for the record, I would be more comfortable, and I appreciate your flexibility here, if the other two came down and then have the primary building we're talking about be 1,200. The other two.
Yeah, absolutely.
He's not the property owner.
Sit down, please.
Was I clear there, Commissioners? Okay.
Okay, so, would you like to make a motion to that?
Wait, I have one last thing.
Okay.
In trying to be representative of the community, but in only just a brief minute, Mr. Chair, if we could ask Ms. White Wolf, as she does represent 14 other Carson residents, how she feels about this possible compromise that has been reached. That's up to you, Mr. Chair.
We will allow her to make a brief statement.
I appreciate the efforts that are going into making an adjustment. Size is definitely a consideration. Painting would definitely help. As far as the removal of the accessory buildings, he's not the property owner, he's a renter. I don't know if he can get permission for that.
Well, if it were a condition, he would have to get the condition.
And I believe, ma'am, aren't those the two buildings closest to your property?
No.
No, you're on the, you're behind.
I'm to the east, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Ms. Monroy.
Okay, so, I just need clarification on how to make the motion.
Okay.
So, do I read the motion here with the conditions of the...
Yes.
Okay. All right, you guys might have to help me.
Okay, Elise Monroy for the record, I move to approve special use permit-15-079, a special use permit request to allow the cumulative square footage of an accessory structure on a property to exceed 75% of the size of the main residence on property zone, single-family, one acre, located at 4589 Silver Sage Drive, APN 009-176-05, based on the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report, and on the condition that the main structure not exceed 1,200 square feet and the other two accessory structures come down. Yes?
Along with...
Along with the painting and the...
Cars inside.
The cars, and also, this is hard, and also that the cars be placed inside the building that are not registered.
Landscaping.
And that landscaping be done to shield the building. Sorry, clerk.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Sattler. Mr. Sattler.
Staff, do you have, do you have the motion and, okay. We will take a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
Okay, we have a six to one vote in favor of the approval as amended.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to note for the record and for those that participated in this that this is, the planning commission decision is final on special use permits. However, there is a 10-day period in which any party could appeal this decision, and that could be by the applicant, could appeal the conditions, or any other party that participated or submitted letters could appeal their approval of it. That's within 10 days, and if you'd like to do that, please contact the planning division for more information on how to do that.
And thank, I would really appreciate the public participation in this. It's really important for us to hear it. Thank you very much. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess, and we will come back.
And again, the buildings can down after this.
Yeah, yeah.
Please listen.
There is reference to a school in the application, however, no specific details were provided. So, one of the conditions of approval that staff has proposed is that the addition of a school or a childcare facility beyond Sunday School associated with church services would need to have a modification of the special use permit. On this site, you'll note at the north, and I'm going to point to it, that the property line actually exists within where the proposed parking and landscape area is. Carson City right-of-way exists to the north of this property. Carson City has indicated that we don't have a problem with that roadway, right-of-way being abandoned. We don't have any intention on using it. The applicant, I don't believe, has been successful in this point, up to this point, in getting the other property owners to agree to an abandonment. I believe that engineering may choose to move forward with an abandonment, however, if they do not, the applicant would need to obtain an encroachment permit for the utilization of the parking spaces in the landscape area to accommodate this church. This is a floor plan of the church. It shows a large sanctuary area with stage, a multipurpose room, some classrooms and offices that would be typical of a standard church. And then, the elevations that are being proposed of the church. The south elevation that would face Clear Creek Avenue, the north elevation that would face adjacent properties, the east elevation that would face the existing church that's immediately adjacent, and then the west elevation that would face Silver Sage Drive. I had mentioned previously that their staff issued a late information memo, and it's specifically related to the architecture on this building. There is already a condition in the staff report that indicates that the architectural features and treatments that are proposed by the applicant aren't adequate for our site design standards. However, it's not particularly clear, it's relatively vague, and so staff offers a modified condition to address this building that says the following. "The proposed building must meet the minimum guidelines of development standards Division One, land use and site design. In addition to the proposed stone wainscoting, this shall include variation wall planes and architectural embellishment to break up both the rectangular shape of the building as well as large expanses of metal surface. This treatment shall be provided on all four sides of the building as the north and east sides are visible from adjacent residential and church properties. The proposed architectural treatment shall be reviewed and approved by the planning division." So essentially, what we're trying to accomplish with this revised condition is to ensure that there is a way that we can address the rectangular shape of this building as well as the large, straight wall planes that exist today. So that is what that condition is intended to address. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions that are outlined in the staff report. As Lee had mentioned, there was a letter submitted, and it's in the staff report, in opposition to this project, with several signatures of surrounding property owners, and several of them, I believe, are here today as well. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions for staff at this point?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Sattler.
Would you clarify again, the, I noticed there are four classrooms in there. The school aspect would be if it was run as a separate school, not just like during or after services for that sort of thing, is that correct?
Yes, so, in several cases, churches in the city have a private school option. For example, Bethlehem Lutheran, the church that you heard, or the school you heard last month, Cavalry Church, several of them have a private school, as well as daycare facilities. And those are both required by special use permits separately, and because they weren't specifically addressed beyond just a mention, staff doesn't feel it's appropriate to make an approval that includes those.
But they could still use those classrooms for, during their services, or something else for the kids, or whatever?
Correct, yes.
Are there any other questions? Is the applicant here? Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name's Robert Lauder. I'm the owner of RL Engineering.
Okay, and you have read the staff report?
Yes, sir.
And did you get a copy of the revised condition?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and do you accept those conditions?
Absolutely, and if you don't mind, I could, I'd like to spend a minute or two just explaining where we're at.
Okay, please do.
First, I want to just say that I agree completely with staff about the need to fine-tune the design of the building from an architectural standpoint. And I'm in the process right now of looking at alternatives and fully intend to follow through with staff until we have an acceptable design. I know that one of the concerns has been that it's quote-unquote "a metal building", and I, just in case that there are people here that don't understand what a metal building is, I'm going to try to tell you what it is in 60 seconds or less. A metal building usually has a metal roof, but not always, usually has metal walls, but not always, almost always has a steel frame, internal frame to support it, and steel girts in the walls to support the walls, wall sheathing, and steel purlins in the roof to support the roof sheathing. That's my best understanding of what a metal building is. The, and I think our intent, or I'm going to say, my, and the owner's intent, is to arrive at an architectural design that meets the city's standards with the economy of a metal building. Because budget is paramount, as I'm sure you, all of you that are familiar with churches know that they don't have a lot of money. And so, budget is a big part of the picture, but that doesn't mean that that overrides the architectural standards that the city has. So we fully intend to follow the city's standards and come up with something that we can all be proud of. One of the other concerns that was raised had to do with the appearance of the site in general, that is, the parking areas and the building itself. The, we have, if you can go to the site plan, Susan? To the site plan. The site plan, as it's drawn, obviously shows the building on the eastern side of the site. In, in response to concerns that the landscape areas on the perimeter of the site are not large enough to provide planting, to properly buffer the parking area and the building, we're prepared to revise that design to provide more, more buffer space. And basically, the general idea would be to take, if you can see, there's an area to the right of the building that doesn't have anything in it, that's a landscape area, take that and move it over to the west side of the site. And I realize that's a gross simplification, but that would enable us to provide more landscaping on the west side and provide, at least provide a buffer on that side. I think on the north side, we generally have enough room to do that anyway. On the, on the east side, we're adjacent to another church, and on the south side is the street. So, I just wanted to offer that up. There were, there were some things in the report that I just wanted to clarify, and there was a comment in the report about requirements for a commercial kitchen, and I just want to be clear that we are not proposing a commercial-grade kitchen. Not. So that there should be no requirements having to do with commercial-grade kitchens, because we intend that in the plans, there will be no commercial-grade kitchen. What else did I want to say? Oh, the, the comment in the, in the report about school, we never intended to promote that there would be any kind of private church school, that the intent was only to provide Sunday School classes during normal Sunday services, or whenever, whenever normal services There were also comments about the amount of lighting, and basically, on the one hand, we're constrained by the city requirements to provide a certain amount of foot candles in the parking lots for safety, so people don't trip and fall in the dark. But on the other hand, we're not constrained in how we do that, in terms of how many lights and how tall, and which direction they point. And we're, we fully intend to work with staff to minimize the light pollution that this site might create. I think that's all I have, unless you have more questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Castro.
Mr. Hernandez, is he present? One question, sir. Why this location?
That's a, good evening, Mr. Sharon, the whole board. The reason why we chose the location is because it's an expensive piece of property that I buy myself, together with my wife, just to have part of the community from Minden and Gardenville, and also people from here, from North Carson City, and just to meet together and worship the Lord.
And that's why you chose that specific piece of land?
Well, at the time, when, when we bought the property, the land, I was, I was able to buy the property with the money that I had been saving, saved my wife and I through many years, yeah.
And you knew the zoning of it when you bought it?
Yes.
And you bought it with the intention to build a church?
I bought it with intention to, just to build a church, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I guess my, my own, my, one thing that bothers me, and it's a, it's a topic that I go off on, on a regular basis, is the amount of, of parking and asphalt coverage on the, on the property. And I'm, and I'm wondering if there was any thought given to, not necessarily reducing the parking, because you're pretty much at what you, what you're required, but you have pretty wide aisles, and if you did one-way aisles and angled parking, you know, you might be able to reduce some of the, some of the asphalt coverage. And that's just an observation.
And I guess my, my response is that, in my experience, well, number one, in my, in my experience designing parking lots, that is a pretty efficient layout. That's not to say that a more efficient layout can't be made, and, and when, when I explained to the owner the concerns about landscape buffers, and actually, I've already drawn a conceptual alternative, but I didn't have time to give it to Susan and put it in the packet, he was, "Yeah, let's do that." And given that we're going to probably change things, the way the site layout is anyway, I'm absolutely not averse to looking at other alternatives.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on this application, please step forward, sign in, and give us your name, and let us know what you think.
For the record, my name is Gornavir Habdi. I live at 5250 Silver Sage, which is just north of the proposed site, about a half a block, on the corner of Arthur and Silver Sage. My husband and I chose to move out into that neighborhood because of the rural setting, so, lack of streetlights, lack of traffic. And I bring two concerns that address safety. The acre-plus parcels in that neighborhood allow for horses. I have horses, and horses and traffic don't mix. I go down Silver Sage to the reservation to the Stewart facility, and I take that area, which is not populated and not heavily trafficked, to get out to Prison Hill to go ride my horse. With the recent development, with the construction and the freeway and all the traffic that's being diverted, I've had two very close calls with increased traffic, which has me very concerned. Like I said, horses and vehicles don't mix, and I stay off to the road, but when you have people going 50 miles an hour in a 25, because they're frustrated with the traffic detours, you can't tell them what to do, you know? They, they're going to do what they're going to do. I've witnessed more accidents in that area recently, since the construction and the detours have happened. And I called the city, and they did put in dip signs, but I've also asked for a traffic, I guess, evaluation, because there's no stop signs at Silver Sage and Arthur. So there's several issues about the increased traffic that I'm concerned about. The other thing is, with the five churches, five churches, Sunday service, all trying to get out onto Clear Creek and overflow into Arthur and Silver Sage and Center Street, it's going to be a nightmare. You've got Sunday services, you've got Saturday services, you've got Wednesday services. I ride on Sundays. I'm now having to change my lifestyle and not ride on Sundays to avoid the traffic. So I'm concerned. I'm concerned that this is a rural setting, these are neighborhoods that have horses, and we bought this property so we didn't have to deal with streetlights and traffic, and working with that church. It's going to be all asphalt, lots of lights, lots of traffic, and I'm concerned about the safety of myself, my family, and anybody who's walking on the road, because it's not an improved area. It's a rural setting. It's a rural neighborhood. That's pretty much it, and I would just, and I would just ask the commission members, if this was a proposed, you know, proposal in your neighborhood, would you, would you want that? You know, is that something you would approve? Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Christy Geiser. I reside at 601 Arthur Drive, which is directly north of the proposed church. I'm going to echo exactly what the speaker before me has said regarding the many churches, the traffic, et cetera. I also would like to call your attention to, I don't have one in front of me, but I do know that it's on page nine, item number seven in your packet. It speaks to something like the resulting zoning variance will not result in material damages or prejudice to the other properties in the, in the vicinity. And it says it's not anticipated. However, I spoke to a realtor I know who knows exactly where we live, and she replied to that in an email to me that I'd be happy to submit to the commission. And essentially, what it says is, building a church, another church, on an adjacent property to other residential properties can affect the value of those properties adversely. Many buyers in search of a new home often see that as a negative due to increased traffic and noise, and possibly less privacy, thus potentially devaluing the property. So I would submit to you that that particular statement is inaccurate. I don't know where they got it, but I believe it to be inaccurate. We have an easement, I believe you called it previously, as the right-of-way by Carson City, that we are not going to abandon. Myself, my husband, and the two neighbors adjacent to us, to the east and the west, I believe are in agreement, and they are both here. So again, I echo what the previous speaker said with these additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you're located sharing that easement, where they're talking about doing away with the road, is that where you're located, on the other side?
Correct, we're in the middle.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The lady in the back.
My name is Joyce Gale Ramos, and if you turn to page 12, you can see my little shed. I'm right next door. I just want to say that we've been put in a position of defending ourselves, and that shouldn't have to be. We're having a public building put into a private area, and that's very similar to a bar or a casino, or something like that. Also, I'm concerned about the saturation. There, we're becoming churches like Jerusalem. There's already two churches on the block. This is, one is going to be right next to it. I understand the pastor isn't very happy about that, because they're currently serving a Hispanic group of people, their community. And our area is not primarily Hispanic. There are Hispanics, my husband's Hispanic. Actually, he's very upset about this. He didn't come for that reason. Silver Sage was made into a cul-de-sac in our area when they put in the Snyder Bridge. It is really nice. There is very little traffic. Before, people used it as a cutoff. We had traffic all the time down Silver Sage. And now, if they put the church in there, it's going to send those people going out of church, they're going to go up Silver Sage to Arthur, they're going to go up to Snyder, they're going to go down to the Frontage Road, down to 395. They're going to be all over the place, and we're going to be having more traffic again, probably more than usual on those particular days. And my question to you, my last question is, to you commissioners, or, are you commissioners? Okay. You have a lot of power, you know that? You're going to determine our lives tonight. Wow. How would you feel if they were going to put a church right next to your house in a residential area? Think about that for a minute, because I really have nothing against churches, but I do this one because it's right next door to me. And I really would prefer them to be someplace more open and not in a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Robert Foljam. I've lived on Clear Creek Avenue since 1989. I had a church built right next to me. The last time I was before this commission, I was in opposition of it then. The church that is next to me, I'm on the very west end of Clear Creek. They did a beautiful job. They've been great neighbors, and they have a beautiful building. It's not a steel building, and if you ever drive down Clear Creek, it's right in behind Western Nevada Supply. They put a lot of thought in it. When they knew we were in opposition, they came and talked to me and my wife, and there was a lot of things that we had told them that we would like to see with it. And you know what? They made those improvements. So tonight, I'd like us to be pretty open about what should be and shouldn't be allowed. Now, we already have five churches in the area that are serving the people in that area. That's one thing. Number two, they're asking for a special use permit. Now, we all moved out in these areas because there are more animals than there are people. We like the rural setting. I raised my family there. We had horses. We never have had a complaint from our neighbors, but we don't live right on top of each other. So that being said, we're going to take and try and change the zoning. First and foremost, that is single-family, one acre minimum. It should stay as such. The building that they're proposing, I own a commercial building, and it is a steel building, and it's not even as large as this. It's in Mound House, it's a body shop, it's about 7,500 square feet. This would be larger than my shop. And I work on a lot of cars, it's a big piece of property, but it's zoned properly. It is zoned industrial. And this is, you know, we can call it anything we want to, but this is a commercial-style building. It looks like it. They're going to pave, it looks like the entire piece of property, according to this, almost looks like it's paved. Now, I'm down the street, my brother recently, about five years ago, bought a foreclosed house that is two doors down from that. He wasn't able to make it today, but he's not in support of this church as well. Their neighbor directly east of them, which is an existing church, they are not in support of it. We also look at some, or there were some comparisons with the Washoe Tribe. You know where we're at? We're kind of landlocked anymore. We have the Washoe Tribe to the south of us. Now, the thing is, there's some developments over there that I haven't really been in support of, but we have no say of that. We're not taxpayers there. But we are taxpayers on where they want to put this church, and I think we do have a say. We do not want any more traffic. They've approved the Schultz Ranch development, which is directly going down Center Street. They're also going to carry it out on Topsy Lane. They've just done improvements on our road. They brought water and sewer in there. We're going to be required to hook up the sewer. They've put curb and gutter and sidewalks. They've done a lot of improvements, but I hope these improvements weren't so this is going to be a main thoroughfare. This is a residential street, and it should stay as such. So, you know, that's some of the concerns I have. But I would say also that, you know, they listed three letters of opposition. One of those letters almost had 20 signatures, okay? Now, they noticed 32 property owners, just real fuzzy math, you know, it's over 50%. So there's not a lot of people here that, that want to see this facility go in. It's zoned for single-family, residential, one acre. We should not change the zoning on it. So that's first and foremost. The other letters, one was from, you know, an individual, the other one was from the church that's right next door to it. So my concern here is, when I looked at the packet, they have a motion on the very front page, before you even read anything, approving this. Well, I think if you all drive down there, and you all live here, you know, it doesn't take that much to drive down there. Probably everybody's used it as a shortcut to get to Fuji Park, or Costco, or something along those lines. But this is the thing, we live here. This is where our residents are. I plan on staying here, and all they're going to do is create more traffic. I do not want to see a metal building of any sort put on that property. And I think it should be reserved for another family to move in there, and not a commercial operation. They can call it anything they want to, but I call it commercial. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Go ahead. Sir, the, you said you have a church that's your neighbor?
Yes.
What is the property they built their church on zoned?
What is it? I'm sorry, didn't?
Yeah, what is, what is the zoning of the property that the church that is your neighbor was built on?
It was, single-family, one acre.
And when was it built?
It was built about seven, eight years ago.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would just like to point out that while this is zoned, single-family, one acre, a permitted use with a special use permit is, a church is allowed in this zone with a special use permit. It's not changing the zoning. The zoning allows for this church with a special use permit.
With a special use permit?
Right.
But that is something that you have to decide.
Right, that's what we're going to decide.
Whether you want to grant.
Right.
And I'm, I'm just recommending that you don't grant.
Right.
We do not want it in our neighborhood.
Right, but you had mentioned, you had, you had referred to it as a change in zoning, and I just wanted to point out that this is not a change in zoning.
Okay, very well.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to address this issue? Please step forward. State your name for the record.
My name is Jean Gunter. I live at 501 Arthur, which is an adjacent property to this, directly to the north. My concerns were stated very well in the letter on page 22 that you've already have. I was one of the signatories to that. I'm not going to go over all that again. I do definitely have concerns about the amount of traffic that'll bring in there. Also, the light pollution. You can try and mitigate it, but it's still lights where there aren't lights now, and that's one of the reasons we moved out there, is because it's rural, and there's not a lot of light pollution. I also would like you to know that my husband and I are against the abandonment, abandonment of Henlock Drive, which is part of what's on the plan. So, we are one of the three owners that are on that section that will be abandoned, and we are against it. All, all three of us, all three of the, the landowners. And that's about it. And I'm, I'm opposed to the church being put in there.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the? Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Richard Geiser, and I live at... My name's Richard Geiser, and I live at 601 Arthur, which is directly north of the building that's proposed. And I agree with everyone's statements that have been before you previously, but I don't believe anybody's mentioned anything about the noise. I like to sleep in on Sundays. I work really hard. I work like 60 hours a week. And I like quiet on Sundays. I would imagine most of the residents do, so there are times when the existing church is loud, and I have to close my bedroom window, which gets very stuffy. So I would imagine if there's a second church, I would have to turn up the music, or, you know, I'm not going to sleep in, that's for sure. So, thank you for listening.
Would the applicant like to address any of the issues that were raised by the public?
Mr. Chair and all of the board, I'd like to say this, that right now, we rent in a building on Winnie Lane, and it's only about, I'm going to guess, I'm not very good on measurements, but I'm going to guess that it's only like 20 feet away from a whole complex of apartments. And we never got any complaints. We never got any trouble with these people. I'm pastor of that church for like five years already. And I'm really sorry to hear all the complaints and all of that. And I understand, I understand. But I also like to serve the community, and this is what I do. And believe me, if I have enough money to go buy another building, I would do that, or another property. But I don't have the money. One of the things that I'd like to say too, that I spoke, or actually, the pastor from the next lad, he called me, and he tapped to me. And he invited me to his house. I was expecting to see him today, here today. And he said, "I want to reconsider everything that I wrote and everything that I said." I don't see him today, Victor Romero. And he said, "I'm going to stay together for the kingdom." And I said, "Okay, so you'd like to do that, so we're going to meet there at the meeting." And I also like to say that if it's any recommendations by the staff and Mr. Lawrence, I accept whatever recommendations is. I mean, I'm open for anything and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any question? Yeah, go ahead.
I was just curious...
Excuse me, excuse me, but the question was, did we have any response to any of the...
Yeah, so...
Yeah. Just a couple of points. There were some inaccuracies in the letter in regard to traffic volumes. There was a place in the letter where they said that there was 800 vehicles a day, and that was off by a factor of 10. It was 80 in the engineering report, not 800. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. There's no question that people break the law. They run stop signs, they speed. We can't help that here.
The 322 trips on Sunday was correct, though?
Hold on just a second. I just want to refer to the engineering report, just to make sure. And of course, no, I can't lay my fingers on it. That's not it. That doesn't sound right. What sounds more right to me is 110.
Says on page three of 10, the applicant estimates the church would generate 800 average trips during the week and 320 average daily trips on Sunday. On page three of 10? Which would have been in the applicant's original submitted application.
Yeah, if you can turn to the project impact report, page two of five, there's just a short section on traffic. And the average daily traffic for all day Sunday was estimated at 320. And that's, basically, that's a combination of incoming and outgoing. And that's based on Institute of Traffic Engineers estimating manual.
Okay, and then you were replying to the residents' comments, so I'm sorry to have taken that away from you.
No, no, that's all right. Just in terms of what, just in terms of what the levels of traffic are. And I also contacted the city Public Works Engineering Department to find out what the level of traffic on Clear Creek Avenue is right now. And of course, it varies day by day, but it's on the order of 1700 or 1800. So just to kind of put that in perspective, I thought that that was important to do.
Per day.
Per day. That's all I had for now.
Any questions for the applicant?
I just was curious as to whether any effort was made to meet with the neighbors or whatever, when this was being drawn up, discussed, or whatever, to relieve any, some of their concerns or whatever?
Unfortunately, no. One of the things that, it concerns me very much that there is this much negative feeling. And I was going to propose at a certain point that, especially in regard to the architectural design, because there seemed to be very strong feeling about that, that it might be appropriate to ask for the citizens to nominate someone as a spokesperson, to act as a liaison, to assist in coming up with a mutually agreeable design, assuming that's possible.
Yeah, I think that will be up to you and the residents to work that out. I think that's an excellent idea. I don't think that that is necessarily a condition that we should impose on the application. Any other questions? Okay, any questions of staff, or any comments, observations?
Just a comment. We're sitting here with plans that were somewhat modified, you know, a couple of the conditions today. We're hearing that there's going to be modifications made to the building, et cetera, architecture and everything. And if that is a real concern as well of the citizens, maybe there could be some clarity if that was, if we had that now, instead of down the road, you know, after we either approve or don't approve this idea, that, in other words, we don't have a clear picture of what the building's finished product is going to look like, nor do they. And that seems to be one of the major concerns that they have, along with just the idea of it being there. But I think maybe some more communication or whatever, contact with the citizens, with the neighbors, would have been a good idea.
Typically, throughout communities throughout the country, churches are allowed in residential areas. I think that they're, what they, I don't know, but I suppose they felt that the church should be nearby where the people are. And that's generally the reason why churches are allowed in residential zonings, whether it's, you know, more intense residential than this particular zone. But in this situation, it seems like there's a clustering of churches. There's, I believe, three total, isn't there? There's two, there's another one right behind, and then there's the Indian Reservation. I'm not sure what that situation is. And that's a little bit of a problem. But nevertheless, it's allowed, you know, in this particular zoning. A church is allowed. It didn't, it doesn't say how many, I don't believe. It's just, it's allowed. I think it's really important, you know, what it looks like. And I'm very sorry if it costs more money to build something that's more attractive. I think that a little bit more money with some good design, somebody who has some talent in design should be looking at this and helping with the design of this. I think you just can't pick somebody off the street to design it. It has to be somebody who has experience. Just like if we're going to hire an engineer, we don't get just anybody to do, you know, a water study or whatever. We get somebody with some kind of training. And I'm not saying it has to be a licensed architect. It can be perhaps a designer, I don't know. But, and secondly, in a community like this, it's important that the landscaping be done properly. That, too, should be done by somebody who has expertise in landscape design, if it's going to be in a community. Those are my thoughts.
Is it all right if I respond?
Sure, go ahead.
Just, I just wanted to make a couple of points. Number one, I think, you know, staff already said that they wouldn't... Let me put it another way, that this project, I believe this project won't get a building permit unless staff is satisfied. And if it takes hiring an architect to satisfy staff, then that will be what has to happen. That's number one. Number two, clustering of churches, I'm reminded of some older churches here in town. The Presbyterian Church, the Methodist Church, and Episcopal Church are all contiguous. St. Teresa's was a block away until they moved. So I think that there's a lot of precedent for churches to be near one another. That's all.
Thank you. Just an observation again. A lot of the issue seems to be the track, the increased potential of traffic. And the way your site plan is designed, you've got an entry/exit on Silver Sage, which is going to encourage more use of Silver Sage. If you could somehow, maybe if you redesigned the site plan so that traffic entered and exited off of Clear Creek, you would at least then have a better thoroughfare for the traffic and not encourage people to use Arthur and Silver Sage.
I'm not sure that's possible within the constraints of city design policy. Basically, the city standards say that new driveways of this size required for this kind of facility have to be at least 250 feet on center. I'm not, and they have to have a certain setback from the intersections. I'm not sure that's possible. I would definitely entertain it, but I just don't, I question whether it's possible.
Right. Well, we just approved a small subdivision that had a single entrance. So maybe you could work a plan out that would have a single entrance.
I understand what you're saying. I understand.
And that might relieve some of the traffic issues in the residential neighborhood.
And while I don't want to say you're wrong, I want to say that sometimes things have unintended consequences, and sometimes it takes a lot longer for traffic to clear a parking lot when there's only one exit than if there's two. And that can mean that there's more noise from vehicles for a longer period of time.
I understand that.
I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but as I kind of touched on earlier, I know for myself, I would feel much more comfortable having seen what the final building's going to more look like than, and that thing that it's going to be drawn up, and changes, and facings changed, and that sort of thing. That's just my kind, and I imagine some of the neighbors would feel more better if they could see that as well. It's like the gentleman said, the church up the street got with the neighbors, they made design, you know, set changes and things like that, to where it was more acceptable to the neighborhood. But none of that's been done, because no one has contacted the church, or the church hasn't talked to the neighbors. So that's just a comment on my part.
Go ahead.
On, at least more for the record, on the same lines as Commissioner Sattler, I think that I'd like to see a plan with what the building's going to actually look like, and that I'd also like to see if there's a way for the applicants to have a conversation with the residents of the community, as this is going to be a community that you are intending to serve. I think that'd be a good way to get off on the right foot. And also, I think it might be worth having a discussion on how some of the light pollution can be mitigated. That seemed to be like an issue, too, that hasn't been brought up. So those would just be my concerns. I echo Commissioner Sattler in that I'd like to see some more developed plans, possibly. So, thank you.
Would you be, would the applicant be agreeable to continuing this, so that you could work out a site, a better, more appropriate site plan?
If that would help you make a decision, yes.
Well, I'm getting that that's the consensus. At this point, a site plan and a dialogue between the residents and applicant.
Something about the architecture, too, of the building.
Sure.
I think it needs to be designed by somebody. I think for the long-term benefit of the owner of the building, that he wanted to be an attractive building. So I think that would be important to him.
I think that the essence of that is that if we brought it to a vote tonight, it would, we would vote it down. So, I'm just saying.
So if you're agreeable to a continuance, I would entertain a motion to that.
I think we're amenable.
Okay. We have some additional public comment before we take...
My name is Sandra Danforth. I live at 230 Clear Creek Avenue, and I'm five houses down from the proposal. One thing I have not heard addressed this evening, and I would like to have it addressed, is the signage. I don't know, none of us know how large of a sign would be allowed, or what the applicant is proposing. So we can't speak to that issue.
Okay, I think that that would be something that would be considered in a community meeting, that the applicant has indicated that he's agreeable to having, that you could address that issue.
On that note, I would volunteer my home for that community meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I would just like to address the traffic issue. The neighborhood is saturated with traffic as it is right now. And feel free to come out... And feel free to come out anytime, Sunday, after work, before work, and check it out. We've lived there 21 years, and we used to get about four cars, five cars an hour. Now it's one a minute. So consider that in your decision, please, if you'd like to live in a neighborhood like that. We're a rural area, and we like our peace and quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez, did you have a?
Mr. Hernandez, like the recommendation, I would like to meet with the neighbors and sit down. If I allow me to say something, I used to work for the casinos. I used to be in the engineering department. I give up my work just to serve the community. My wife, she used to be a manager in one of the departments also, one of the stores in Savoletajo, a seaway. And she also give up her work for, just to serve the community. I don't wanna bring any harm, any pain, any sorrow, trouble to the community. I like to serve the community. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, it seems like the consensus is gonna be a recommendation for a continuance.
Most comfortable with that.
And Lee, do you have any comments on that?
So, no, yeah, I was gonna just say, if you're open to a continuance, an indefinite continuance, and we can work with the applicant to determine when they have the information to bring back, and then we'll renotice the neighbors again for the meeting. So just, the difference between continuing to a date specific, if it's okay to continue it.
I think prefer indefinitely.
Indefinitely till the applicant works with us and it has the materials to bring back to you.
Okay. I think, I think that'll, that'll work. So, Mr. Sattler, would you like to make a motion?
Do I redirect?
No, no. I would just make a motion to continue.
On Agenda Item F5, I would like to make a motion to, for a continuance indefinitely until staff and they are ready to come back.
I'll second it.
You can't second anything.
Second, third, fourth.
Okay. We have, we have a motion and a second to continue this item until a future date to give the applicant and the neighbors a time to sit down and discuss all of the issues involved. Yes. So, all those in favor of the motion to continue signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, seven zip. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's move on to Item F6. Mark Turner and Sean Richards for a special use permit to allow multifamily apartments in a residential-commercial zoning district on property zone retail. I'm sorry, let me read that again. To allow multifamily apartments in a retail-commercial zoning district on a property-zone retail-commercial planned unit development located at, on GS Richards Boulevard, APNs 007-461-22 and -23. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of things to note before we get into this one. Some late information that we received on this item, four additional letters in support of the application, three additional letters opposed. All of that information has been previously provided to you, as well as a late information memo issued by staff clarifying one condition and proposing a new condition based on information provided by the applicant. And I will get into that when I get to the site design of this project. So, the applicant, as you mentioned, is proposing a 90-unit multifamily apartment project that includes 50 two-bedroom units and 41-bedroom units on the subject property that I show on the aerial on the screen. Before I talk too in-depth about the specific project, I want to talk about the mechanism to which we are recommending approval for this. There's been a lot of discussion internally about whether or not this project should be heard as a special use permit or as a modification to the PUD. After significant research and consideration, staff has determined that a special use permit is the appropriate mechanism based on what has been outlined in not only Carson City Code, but also in the development agreement for the Silver Oak Planned Unit Development, of which this is a part. This zoning is retail-commercial within the PUD. The retail-commercial allows residential as a conditional use with a special use permit. In addition to that, the Silver Oak Planned Unit Development identifies the project as a planned unit development project within the SF 12,000 PUD, RC, which is retail-commercial PUD, TC PUD, ROPUD, MB PUD zoning designations, together with all of the uses accessory to and customarily incidental to the above referenced zones. So based on that statement and the allowance for residential with a special use permit in the retail-commercial zoning district, staff has determined a special use permit is appropriate. That is also evidenced by several other special use permits that set precedence for this as it relates to the PUD. Four of them in particular, one for the Kmart Supercenter to allow retail use in excess of 50,000 square feet, one for the Sierra Place Assisted Living Facility to allow a aggregate care facility, one to allow the special use permit for the shopping center attached to Kmart, which is also in excess of 50,000 square feet, and one to allow two multifamily residential units within the retail-commercial zoning district. As a part of the discussion, there's been, there've been people that have talked with us about whether or not these uses were proposed originally as a part of the PUD or not. Staff has researched the previous approvals and determined that while it's possible that the intent was to limit the uses in this retail-commercial area, the PUD does not state that. It is specific retail-commercial and does not limit it. PUDs by their nature do have the ability to limit uses, however, the PUD is silent in that case. So that's how we got to a special use permit. So the project at hand, as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing a 90-unit apartment complex in five buildings with 52, two-bedroom units and 41-bedroom units. The applicant, on the site plan that is shown here, the applicant proposes several landscape areas that include both turf and zerescape landscaping, as well as artificial turf areas. The area that is surrounding the clubhouse and adjacent to Building 5 is proposed to be artificial turf. The area adjacent to Ivy Baldwin Circle and then in between Buildings 1 through 4 is proposed to be turf area. And then landscape areas around the site are proposed to be zerescape. The building is proposed to be three feet, three stories high, as indicated in the elevations that I have here on the screen. This architecture, staff feels, does meet the requirements of the design standards, which include variations in wall plane and materials and other things of the like. There have been discussions about whether this is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and the buildings that have already been built in this area. To that, unfortunately, the PUD is also silent, so staff doesn't have specific design requirements to look to. So we look to our own development standards, which state that variations in wall planes and other things like that are required. And we do believe the applicant has met that requirement. However, I would note that there is a section in the development standards that allows for the planning commission to look at compatibility with the surrounding uses. So, surrounding architectures, pardon me. The architectural style, massing in proportion of a building should be compatible with and complement its surroundings and environmental characteristics of the community. So if for some reason the commission decided that this architecture was not appropriate, given what is surrounding, then that would be something that you could look to. A couple of things to note. Parking, so based on 90 units, there are, and I'm gonna go back to the site plan, actually. Based on 90 units and two spaces per unit, the requirement for parking on this site would be 180 spaces. The applicant has provided 181 spaces total, 60 spaces that are within the buildings as private garages, and 121 spaces on the surface, as you see in the site plan. The applicant is also proposing some fencing, and that actually relates to the memo that I issued as late information. There is a side obscuring fence that is proposed surrounding the clubhouse, pool, and playground area. Right now, it's proposed basically about 28 feet from Ivy Baldwin Circle and about 10 feet from Country Club Drive. Staff feels that a side obscuring fence that close to the street would create a tunnel effect, especially around the Ivy Baldwin Circle roundabout. So what we're proposing is for the side obscuring fence only, and that's where the clarification and the condition comes in, that the applicant maintain a 30-foot setback from the back of curb. So it gives another two feet at the Ivy Baldwin Circle and then another 20 feet on the Country Club Drive side to ensure that that's a little bit more open. So the modified condition reads as such. The applicant shall place only the proposed side obscuring fence as shown on the site plan, a minimum of 30 feet away from the back of curb along Country Club Drive and Ivy Baldwin Circle. This fence is required to be side obscuring and shall not be open fencing at any time. The applicant shall provide landscape screening, including trees adjacent to the fence, to the satisfaction of the planning division. The applicant, after looking at the conditions of approval, wanted to clarify for us that they do intend to put fencing around the entirety of the property. However, they're proposing, which I have shown a picture in the late material, they're proposing an open iron fence that's six feet high. Staff, as a result of that, has proposed an additional condition, and I'll note that staff doesn't have a problem with this fence, but I would say the condition reads, "The six-foot open iron fence shall be reviewed and approved by the planning division prior to installation, and shall be located behind the landscaping buffer and sidewalk on the sides adjacent to the public right-of-way." So basically, that ensures that on the GS Richards Boulevard side and the Country Club Drive side and any fencing that would be adjacent to Ivy Baldwin would provide for the landscaping to be on the right-of-way side of the fence as opposed to behind the fence. So it creates an additional opportunity for screening. As we talked about a little bit in the Jackson Village item that you heard previously, the residential in a retail-commercial or any commercial zone for that matter is subject to very specific standards beyond regular residential. The residential developments in, standards in non-residential districts include setback variation, specific requirements for open space, specific parking, which is actually the same as what our regular requirements are. But in addition, there are four special use permit requirements that two of those four need to be met for a project. They include whether or not the site is appropriate for commercial uses, has it been demonstrated as a viable location for commercial uses? Is the development integrated into a mixed-use development that includes commercial? Is the development situated on a primary commercial arterial? And is the site designated mixed-use commercial, mixed-use residential, or mixed-use employment on the master-plan land use map, and the project meets all applicable mixed-use criteria and standards? Staff does feel that the applicant meets three out of the four of these items. The one that staff does not feel the applicant meets is that it has not been demonstrated to us that the site is not viable for a commercial project. So I'm gonna conclude my presentation there. There, oh, one more thing before I finish. There is an addition on condition number eight that we would like to add related to the agreement for snow removal between the property and Silver Oak Golf Course. The applicant's proposing that the golf course would take the snow during snow removal. We would like to see an agreement that's recorded to that effect, and that we want the addition of the imperpetuity language to ensure that that agreement is intended to be permanent. There are several people in the audience to speak about various aspects of this project, as well as the applicant. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Victor?
In going through all this, there hasn't been, and maybe I've missed it, so you can answer me, but it seems that all the traffic seems to be going through Ivy Baldwin Circle. Has there been any discussion or talk of actually going north on GS Richards Boulevard? If you go to your original first slide, I think it'll be the one you showed us in the beginning. So instead of it all dumping on Ivy Baldwin Circle, that it would actually go up GS Richards Boulevard to, I think that's Silver Oak Drive, right? Can you tell me about that?
So, in my recollection from the traffic study, I believe that for the most part, the traffic engineer anticipates that the traffic would go to College Parkway. However, I do believe that he, he stated in the report that he anticipated traffic would also go to the north. The specific numbers I couldn't say at this point, but if you'd like me to look them up, I will.
No, I just, for me, the project, that's the one, like, thing that stood in my mind as a negative, would be all the traffic dumping onto College Parkway, as opposed to if it was somehow they could push it to what's Silver Oak Drive. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? At this point, I'd like to have the applicant come forward and...
Good evening, for the record, Jeff Frame, owner of Frame Architecture Incorporated.
Okay. And you had an opportunity to read the staff report?
Yes, we have.
And the conditions of approval?
Yes, we have.
Along with the amended conditions?
Yes.
Okay. And do you, do you find those acceptable?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Would you like to explain your project?
Actually, staff did such a great job explaining it. I don't really have anything to add right now, so I don't think I'm just gonna leave it open it up for questions right now.
Okay.
If there's any concerns, obviously I'll be available.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the, for the applicant?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Just for the record. I really enjoyed this and the way you guys did these, as opposed to having to deal with these. So just for the record.
Thank you.
Okay.
It looks like a very nice project. Looking at the plans, because I'm an architect, I don't see an elevator in there, three-story units. Now, that's not something that we're concerned about here, but what about the marketability of people that have to walk up two flights stairs with their couch, with their refrigerator, with all that sort of thing without an elevator? Have you thought about that?
We have. And, I mean, as an architect, you'll know that, of course, elevator's not required for three stories in a multifamily building.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
As, since, as you know, as being an architect, it's not required, we're not required to have an elevator in a three-story multifamily building. I think from a marketability standpoint and just the cost of the whole project, it came down to, you know, just something that we didn't feel was needed at the time.
So it's a cost matter?
Yeah, it's a cost and a function.
It might be a rentability matter, though.
Yeah, I think that the client has done, you know, pretty good research on the rentability.
That doesn't concern us.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, at this point, I don't have any questions. I think it's... I think it's time to listen to the public. All right, so we will take public comment. If you are going to repeat what someone else has said, please be as brief as possible, but we will allow everyone to speak. So self-select and state your name and sign in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steve Hartman. On some, for any of you who may have looked at the underlying PUD, I had some involvement with that project in its early inception. I would disagree with staff relative to the zone districts because the dominant piece of that is PUD. It's different than pretty much anywhere else that you'll look around the community. There's a specific limitation with regard to density. There are specific design elements as it relates to the PUD, and those design elements were to take the intense and dense uses and put them in the midst of open space. So when you take a look at where the residential density is, that's where it's located. And it was done for a reason. It is clear that PUDs, mixed-use PUDs, are different than a subdivision. I do not believe at this point that it's appropriate to do a special use permit, understanding what Susan had to say, and I'll tell you, you have a very fine planner there. I just happen to disagree with her position on this. PUDs, particularly mixed PUDs on large projects that take multiple years to do, are always going to have some variation. They're going to change time and time again. There's going to be little elements that will always come up that will be different. So there's some flexibility built into it. But there's a general design theme that goes with it. I believe that it's appropriate to look at in the context of the PUD when you do a density change and an intensity change that's 90 units in that location with reasonably poor traffic circulation, as was pointed out. There's also a provision in the development agreement that said when there's a, I forget what the traffic numbers are, but when it reaches that threshold, College Parkway will be improved with a light by the developer. I don't know, I haven't seen the traffic counts. That's not my issue. My issue is I think you need to look at the overall design of large projects, and when they're a PUD and they have a zoning designation, I think you have to look at that. I've laid out a lot of those issues. I think there are issues with respect to the CCNRs as well. That is nothing that you're to be concerned with. I think the larger issue is how is it appropriate to amend a PUD? Some time ago, I believe in '98, we had to bring in an additional five acres and it created 24 additional units. The vehicle used for a reasonably modest change was an amendment to the PUD and ultimately the development agreement. Quality projects will survive of their own. Do I like the architecture? Nah. I got white hair, I look at things very differently. That looks good in Midtown Reno. I don't think it looks good there, but that's just me. That's not my issue. My issue is the process in getting the input to take a look at something that's a much, much bigger project. It's not just one parcel here and one parcel there. It's a, it's a theme that goes through the community within the community, and that's how it got to where it is today. So not saying I'm a thumbs up or thumbs down, I just think if you want to do a first-class project and you want to attract docs and medical folks and all the things that the market is, I think you do something more like Lakewood. I think you take one of the clusters, the AABBCCDDEE that are throughout, that are inside the golf course, and you use that, much like Lakewood did, they built a whole complex of condominiums, and then they treated them like apartments and did for many, 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 many years. If we're dealing with, looking at the quality and we're looking at trying to do something that deals with that market segment, to me, that's a great response quality-wise. It's already in there, you don't need to have a special use permit. I do believe that there are a lot of investment-backed expectations by people in that area that are going to feel harmed by this. Again, I'm not one of those. I don't own any property there. That's some of the philosophy that went into it. Juan Guzman and I, and it was all part of the public record, everybody on the Silver Oak side was in, everybody on the city was in. We looked at mixed-use commercial because it was a, it was something we wanted to see come to the community. We'd patterned a lot of our stuff after the visioning study that we did back in the, what was that, the late 80s, I guess, and, which was some of the design themes that were contained within the CCNRs and the project. So that's my issue. I just think it's more appropriate to get the input. I think there's a way to do commercial and some multifamily. I just don't think you have that intensity of use. I think there are a lot of impacts, so. Last thing, having served on boards and commissions for in excess of 20 years in this community, I do appreciate you being here, even though there will be times when you don't. But it's important that you do this. I've heard a lot of common sense tonight, and so I applaud you for doing that. Thank you.
Are there any questions for? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Please step forward and state your name.
Good evening. I'm Richard Whitley, and I do live in the area. I have the building, Susan? Oh, okay, Susan's got it up now.
Do you want the aerial? Do you remember the aerial?
Excuse me? I was just looking at where the circle was and, okay, that's good, Susan. I do live in the area and, God, I don't know where to start, but I'm going to try to keep my time really short. But the problem that I have, if you pick even segments, Mr. Hartman, I agree wholeheartedly, but it was a PUD, and a PUD is a hugely important instrument. It's probably the best thing the city had for trying to be some sort of consistency of what's being built and people knowing what they're getting five years, 10 years down the road. This was probably one of the best examples of it, of a PUD, the, all the people that bought houses in the subdivision, the people that lived there, and all the people that built office buildings along this street, which is probably about half occupied, the office buildings, they spent millions knowing what they were getting, and what they were getting was a PUD that said that's, and I didn't write the words in there, it says something village, commercial village, and general commercial. That, the people that did the PUD wrote that, and the reason they wrote that, it really helped us to know what we bought. And for you to put a project like this in with this density is, even if the project was a good project, the density is so absurd that it's requiring 180 parking spaces, and they said they're not asking for any additional parking spaces like on street. Well, that street is part of the PUD, there is no parking on that street. So that's an idle gesture they're handing me. So in other words, if you live there, and I did your job for 19 years, if you live there, what happens is, and I've been a lot of apartments, approved them and whatever, they never have quite enough. The two spaces is never quite enough. In this case, they have two spaces per unit. If I go over and you go over to have dinner at their house, there's no place to park. And that is only because they put five buildings in a place that should have maybe one, maybe two. And the other thing, snow removal is so serious that they can't even provide for their own snow removal, they have to dump it in the golf course. Take away three buildings and you have room for your snow removal, you have room for your parking. And then the other issue that bothers me, I assume that the applicants, because they were coming for a special use, which I love special use permits because you're in charge of everything, you can make it right. If there's not enough parking, you can make it right. If there's not enough snow removal, you can make it right. You can make them paint the color, you can make them change the design because it's special, they're asking for something. But it's just frustrating to me that they would come in with that density, and the other thing would be, is all the other people that are going to be affected greatly, every one of those doctors along their office buildings are accountants, those people are stuck with whatever goes in there. They spent millions of dollars and for them to have the, and how many people were contacted by these applicants? They're asking me for a special use, come to me and show me the project, come to the other people and show them the project. I heard about it probably six months ago, and I said it was probably a pretty poor idea, but did, are the other applicants, did they contact the people that are going to be greatly affected and say, "My God, we're going to really destroy your property value, the density, and right now we pay a huge amount of taxes and I don't complain about it." But look at even the design. I mean, the design, is that anything that Silver Oaks has introduced anywhere? Anywhere in their project? No. I know I gave you a lot to think about. The other thing was the applicant said that it was a mixed-use project, or it was a, it is acceptable usage. So it's only acceptable if you accept it as usage, but there was never on that drawing that that was commercial. I mean, that that was a high-density residential or apartment buildings, never. And then back, even when I was sitting on planning commission, they came back in for a revision on that property, and not once was there ever a mention of apartments on it. So for them to say that this is always their idea, that's really pretty selective. So I know I gave you a lot to chew on, and I know I had a lot on my mind. I'm sorry I ran over, Mr. Chairman. Do you have questions for me?
Any questions? I guess not.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address this item?
My name is Brenda Whitley, and I'm the wife of Richard Whitley, and we live two doors down. We're at 3480 GS Richards Boulevard, and we did come in for a special use permit as well for a mixed-use building. We have a three-story building, and we have businesses on the bottom floor, and we have two apartments on the top floor, which we occupy ourselves, and the butters occupy the other apartment up there. And for your information, we did put an elevator in so we can get up there, but I have a, besides the density, which I think is absolutely ridiculous, I have one thing that just drives me crazy as a mother, not that my child, I mean, he's grown up now, but that Ivy Baldwin Circle, I've lived there for 10 years, and the traffic is horrible on that Ivy Baldwin Circle. Cars go around very fast, and if you look at the circle, three sides of it has additional parking. The side that faces this new apartment, this proposed apartment complex, does not have that additional parking. So those, that swimming pool that they're talking about and the playground for the children is right adjacent to that roadway, and cars go around there all the time. If you go over and look, you'll see the curb is all battered and broken down because the cars go up on top, the kids speed around there all the time, and they're going to put the children to play right next to the road. I mean, I, that's the one thing of the whole project, besides the density, is that they would put the children in harm's way by putting that swimming pool and playground adjacent to that road. So that, I hope you consider that when you look at it. But I do think the density is ridiculously, it's a lot of people to put in a small, small area. So that's all. Anything else?
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Anyone else?
Yes. I'm Rob Botter. I'm one of the other residents there at 3480 GS Richards Boulevard. Without being redundant, the 40 and 50-unit proposal, that is 180 parking places, is that correct if they're, and they have 181? So as Mr. Whitley said, if you've got one person over for dinner, that's about it. It is a major, major parking problem. One little factor aside, Mr. Hartman has been very instrumental in the whole planning of Silver Oak Development. He was one of the instigators and general partners when it was built, designed, and so he has a lot of credibility. Mr. Whitley was in your position, Commissioner Icewine, and he was on the planning commission, and he knows and appreciates what you people go through and what decisions you need to make. So he is one of you, basically, and that's all I have. If you have any questions?
No questions? Okay.
Hi. I'm Pam Botter, Rob Botter's wife. I also live at 3480 GS Richards Boulevard. When I first heard about this project, it was relayed as being a very high-end gated condominium complex. My son moved back to Reno after having been gone for a few years, and so we went apartment hunting in Reno about a year ago, I guess. There is not one apartment complex that we looked at that did not have enclosed garages for every apartment. That's a high-end apartment complex. Not open parking spaces, not just underneath the building parking places, but garages. That's a high-end apartment complex. This is not a high-end apartment complex like they said that they were going to put in. So if they said they were going to put that in, and this is what they're getting, then what actually is going to happen? Thank you very much for your time.
One question? Go ahead. How about elevators?
Elevators, definitely, yes. I, you know what, I'm actually, I'm thinking, I never was on a third floor, so I'm not positive whether they had elevators or not. I guess you're not going to get any old, you know old people.
To your recollection, every complex you went and looked at with your son had an elevator?
No, I'm not saying that. It's, I'm not positive because I don't ever remember going up to a third floor. I remember being in overall, I mean, if, if it was two-story, it was two-story within that apartment, or if they had, you know, a whole commune area, then they had elevators that went up.
Any other questions? Anyone else want to address this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Jim Cavillia, I'm here on behalf of Julius and Joanne Ballardini, who through various entities own multiple properties in this neighborhood, including the North Town Shopping Center, as well as the southeast, the southwest corner of GS Richards Boulevard and College Parkway. And my major concern is with the process and the fact... And my major concern is with the process, and the fact that this is a significant change to that area, and it ought to include, it ought to require a modification of the PUD that would allow for a further, more detailed review, more input from the neighbors in terms of the actual use and the quality that we're talking about. My other major concern is the density. This is a very intense use. You're talking about twenty-two-plus units to an acre. To my knowledge, that's as intense a residential use, or more intense residential use than there is anywhere in Carson City. I'm trying to think of one myself, Mr. Chairman, and I can't think of an area of a more intense residential use. And we're talking in a commercial village, not downtown Carson City. So that's my major concern, and thank you very much.
Thank you. There are a lot of people out there. Anyone else? Mr. Fram.
Yes. Just like to respond on a few of the comments. I'll address the elevator situation first. Two of the higher-end apartment complexes at the south end of Reno, and I know we're in Carson City, but south end of Reno, the Alexander Apartments and the Arrow Creek Apartments, 100% occupied, and three stories tall, do not have elevators. So it's a viable solution. In fact, the people, the developer who just built the Arrow Creek Apartments are doubling the size of that development here this next year. They just got approved by the city council there. So the elevator comment, you know, it's kind of a personal preference. Three stories is the threshold. We have other apartment complexes, not so high-end, I guess we would call it. Again, three stories tall, no elevators, and they seem to rent at a very high rate right now. As far as garages, we do have sixty garages on site, so it's not all 180 open parking spaces, there are sixty garages. Those garages, looking at the plans, I don't know if they're dimensioned, are extremely deep, you know, they're not twenty by fifteen, they're about almost thirty feet deep. So, you know, we're not going to be storing stuff outside the area, you know, that's going to collect or anything. So anyway, other than that, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Just a moment. We have a commissioner would like to ask Mr. Fram a question.
You brought up the Arrow Creek Development.
Yes, sir.
And compared yourself to... what is their density?
Their allowable density is thirty units to the acre.
What is their density?
Their density is almost thirty units to the acre, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Botter, please come up to the microphone.
Is a garage actually considered a carport, or is that a garage considered something that has a door that goes down over it?
I believe these are closed garages.
Okay, is that right?
Yes.
For the record, Mark Turner, and I just want to make a few comments here. It's getting late, and I can see everyone's getting a little bit tired. I do appreciate everyone's right to express their opinions about projects like this. Whenever there are projects like this, there are going to be multiple opinions, running the gamut from one side to the other. And I'm a strong proponent of forums such as this that allow people to express their opinions about these things. But at the end of the day, that's what they are. They are opinions, and we need to keep that in mind as we go forward here. If this request for a special use permit is not viable, then that non-viability needs to be supported with real facts. There have been conjectures made about changes in the value of the properties that will be on GS Richards Boulevard as a result of this project, but that was something we considered. We reached out to multiple different commercial appraisers to ask this question, because as the largest property owner adjacent to this complex, we have concerns about that. Both the appraisers that I spoke to did not believe that there was any factual basis to make an assumption that the value of the commercial properties that are there, the offices that are there, would be adversely impacted by that. And one of them went so far to say is that he would actually argue that it could increase the value of those properties, when you have residents and potential customers living in the area. One of the reasons we've proposed this type of development is that this sort of housing is lacking in Carson City. If you were to move out of your house, and you had to move into an apartment in Carson City, you have to ask yourself, which complex would you want to move into? The Dolphin Bay Apartments and the Parkway Terrace Apartments are nice apartments, but they're at 100% occupancy, and you may have a very difficult time finding a place to live. We talk a lot in Carson City about wanting to attract and retain a young demographic, young professional demographic, educated, yet we don't have much in the way of housing to offer them. And this is one of the reasons why we wanted to build this. The Carson Tahoe Hospital, if you're ever in there, and unfortunately, I'm in there more than I'd like to be, as you walk around there, you see that there's a number of young employees there, respiratory therapists, nurses, many of them commute from Reno. And if you ask them why, it's because there's not really any place they'd like to live in Carson City, and they're not quite ready to become homeowners yet. If you're familiar with the cost of living in the Silver Oak neighborhood, purchasing a house on the golf course runs about a minimum of $450,000. And that's a large chunk to buy it off for a younger person. So in closing, I'd just like to say that we intend to build a high-quality project here, something that's attractive and does not cause problems for the neighborhood. I go through the traffic circle probably five to 10 times every day of the week, including the weekends, to work and look at the projects that we have going at the north end of Silver Oak. And I don't ever experience any traffic problems in the circle, so I'm not quite sure what that relates to. The damage that you see to the traffic circle and the concrete that surrounds it has a lot to do with snowplow activity in the wintertime. And I don't recall one instance where I've seen a car driving up on top of that, at least not during the daylight hours of the hours that I work. So anyway, I just want to thank you commissioners for being here late, thank you for your time and your dedication to your job, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Slarn.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the ADA requirements, handicap requirements. Does this project, maybe staff is best qualified to answer that, does it comply with the ADA standards?
It will with the building permit and construction permits. It has to.
Yeah, it has to, I know.
And then I'll also just direct your attention to the slide that's up on the screen now.
I can't hear you.
I'll direct your attention to the slide that's up on the screen now. It has two ADA units on the ground floor that is in every building.
Yes, I noticed that, but I wondered if the entire project complied, because, you know, not only is it the actual units themselves, but the grounds have to be accessible. It looks like it probably does, but without... I don't know whether it's been checked for that or not.
It's my understanding that you would not be able to obtain a building permit from the city of Carson without having those requirements having been met.
I think you're probably right.
Just as a final aside, this type of development already exists in the South Meadows area of Reno. In that area, there are multifamily projects right next to commercial projects that are also right next to healthcare projects, and they coexist very well. So this is not an untested type of project, and it does have a fair chance for success. Thank you very much.
The difference being, this is Carson City, not Reno.
That is correct.
Ms. Green.
So you've heard multiple concerns about the ninety-one units is a lot. Do you guys have any answers to that, any maybe possible solutions? I mean, that's high density, that's a lot.
In regards to density, I... what is too dense? Who's going to answer that question? And at what standpoint does density really create an issue? And what sort of issue would the density that exists on this project create? And we haven't been able to find any answers to that question that indicate that that is going to be a detrimental thing to this area of Carson City.
Well, living in this area, and I agree, there's... in bigger cities, and I've seen apartments like this, and they do great, but this is Carson City, and I just, I fear that this is maybe not something that we want to be like, we want to be like us. And this is a very high-density project in an area that, I don't know.
Well, let's talk a little bit more about density. If you want to talk about density, the Ballardini property that is located at the end of GS Richards Boulevard is actually closer to the Dolphin Bay Apartments, which is a very high-density usage. I challenge any one of you to go out to the road, Silver Oak Drive, as it meets Carson Street, and sit there for five minutes and count how many cars go by. You may sit there for five minutes and not see one, and that's the truth. I did it myself. So, you know, the comings and goings from these types of complexes are usually limited to certain hours of the day. People leaving for work in the morning, people coming home at night. If you drive by apartment complexes like Parkway Terrace, which is very nearby, Walmart, you'll see that the parking lot is relatively full on the weekends and almost completely empty on the weekdays. So that's the way it functions. And I go by the Parkway Terrace many, many times on the way to the office of my colleagues. I have never encountered an issue of the main entrance and exit out of Parkway Terrace, not once. So I think that these projects, while there may be fear that there's a problem with density, I don't know that the density actually creates any real problems downstream. That's my feeling about it, based on my observations. And I've taken a great deal of time to observe these things, so I could speak intelligently about it when it came down to this type of meeting where people were going to ask these types of questions.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I... my personal take on this is that there was once proposed a hotel on this parcel, and that is very high-density, and it's a transient use. I beg to differ, there is something in these files that shows a hotel.
Yes, and I read the same piece of literature today.
And whether it got built or not is irrelevant.
One of the issues with this area is whether it got built or not. It's seventeen years later after the recordation of the map, and there's nothing built in here. And it's time to build something in Carson City. We're in the midst of an extremely unique time, an opportunity to grow this town with good-quality development as a result of the economic stimulus that's happening here in northern Nevada with Tesla and whatnot. Were it not for those things, we would sit here and simmer along, doing nothing for another twenty years. I think it's time to not be looking in the rearview mirror, but looking forward to the future of what Carson City is going to be. This complex is uniquely situated for people who may work in South Reno. You know, there's some concern about traffic and going through the circle, but I can tell you that people that would leave that complex, in most cases, after their first or second time going through the circle, out to College Parkway, waiting for the traffic there, then going out to the stoplight, will go the other way, go out Silver Oak Drive to Carson Street, and head north on the freeway and go to Reno. So this is a complex that would allow people who work in South Reno to live in Carson City in a less congested community, and go back and forth with relative ease.
Yeah, and I also note that in a number of places, this area of the project is referred to as a village.
Correct.
To me, a village includes residential.
Correct.
It's not significant, it's not only commercial. And I think that the design of this project, the location in conjunction with other commercial uses is, I think it's going to make a walkable place for people to live. They've got the grocery store right there, they've got other uses. It might even lend itself to improving the old Kmart complex, which I'd love to see.
Well, just as a couple of items along that same line, from this complex, you could walk or bike to work at the hospital if you work there, very easily. You could walk or bike to a gym in minutes. You could walk to restaurants, including Glen Eagles, Bullies, Burger King, Starbucks, Brugos, Yogurt Beach, Mi Casa Two. You could walk to the grocery store in less than two minutes. You could walk to medical offices serving many different needs. In less than a minute, you could walk to a golf course in a driving range. You can drive to South Reno in twenty minutes or less because of its proximity to the on-ramp. You could walk or bike to Western Nevada College, or you could go for a bike ride or walk on the extensive network of paths on the west side of Carson City.
Mr. Sandler.
That was one thing I was going to bring up, is consideration, or I'm sure there was some for the college, it's a four-year school now, that, you know, students that may be commuting from Reno or something, or coming from somewhere else, or young people would be able to possibly rent there and then be going to the college.
That's a possibility, and we would welcome that. However, in my contacts with the management company that runs Dolphin Bay and Parkway Terrace, they have surprisingly few students that reside there. And I think that a lot of that has to do with most of the students at Western Nevada College being local and commuting. Not many of them actually are looking for lodging, there's a few, but a lot fewer than I would have ever imagined.
Any other question?
Yeah, so all those things you just mentioned, you could also do that with sixty, fifty, or forty units, right? The people could bike to Tahoe.
You could do it with one unit.
Could do it with one unit. Okay, good, that's good to know.
Okay, are there any other questions?
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm a fairly new resident to Carson City. I haven't been here very long, and I kind of just ended up here, to be honest. I got a job here, and I did the commute from South Reno, because I didn't want to live in Carson at first. I didn't think there would be a place that I would like to live here. And I came here, I spent some time here, and I fell in love with the city. I love Nevada, I love northern Nevada, go Wolfpack, I'm excited about the game this weekend. And I'm excited about a project like this, because this is the kind of place that I would have looked for, and probably would have drawn me to live in Carson sooner. However, like, I commuted for a year, it was a long year. However, I'm sensitive to the density issues, and that does seem like a lot of people to pack in a small area. But I'm excited about the project, I think it looks good, I think it looks like it would fit in that area. And I think it's important, too, to note about the findings, that staff didn't find any reason that this project couldn't be put here. I think that's an important thing that we put on the record. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think that you're right, this is a historic time for northern Nevada, for this region. I'm really excited to see the growth that we have, and our infrastructure and our communities have to grow to meet that. And we, as public servants and commissioners, have to rise to that occasion, so, thank you.
Thank you. Lee or Susan, do we have any idea what the densities are at Dolphin Bay or at Sierra Place?
Not offhand, no.
Because those have got to be pushing, you know, this density.
Not at Sierra Place, that's the old folks' home.
You could get a lot of old folks in a building.
Are we still going to hear public comment, or what's going to end of it?
Do you have anything further for me?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know the densities of those places?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the densities?
Not off the top of my head.
So the one thing that I would provide, multifamily provisions, they don't specify a density per acre, but they do have a density of units per square footage of land. So for studios and one-bedrooms, I believe it's one per 1,200 square feet, and for two bedrooms and above, it's one per 1,500 square feet.
Which equates to twenty-nine to thirty-six units.
Right, and that works out to twenty-nine to thirty-six, depending on the site.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Rob McFadden, for the record. I worked with Mark Turner on this project and surveyed the businesses in the old Kmart Shopping Center, and I was met with an overwhelming acceptance of the project, and many of the people I talked to there were very interested in living in the project as well. I talked to, I think, ten to twelve businesses, and five of them wrote letters of support. So I thought that was pretty interesting. The other thing is, there's a piece of property for sale in the area that myself and some partners were looking at purchasing and developing a professional office complex for. And when I heard about this project, it actually, you know, made the other projects seem better, you know, having a population that drive by and live by that could also frequent the professional complex, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address? Okay, you may come forward again.
First of all, the density, for somebody to say, "What difference does density make?" Well, it makes a huge difference. And for not even contacting any of the doctors and this professional people there, the density makes an incredible difference. And if, Mr. Castro, you said, "Is one good?" I know that there should be a project there, I know it'll be a good project there, but because you have a special use permit, you have the ability to make it a good project. You have the ability not to cram a certain amount of units down our throat simply You have the ability not to cram a certain amount of units down our throat, simply because you said it's a good idea. It's a good idea to have units there. It's a good, but be careful with the PUD. We spent a lot of time on the PUD. We gave Silver Oaks huge concessions as far as the depth of driveways, as far as the width of roads. And we kept our part of the bargain, the community and the people that live in all those houses. Now, for them just to simply say, "I'm going to shove 90 units," when common sense tells you that that's 180 parking spaces, and 180 parking spaces, and like I joked and said, "If you and I go over to dinner, where do we park?" That, to me, scares me. The other one was, Renown just bought the building across the street from them. They only use about half of the building right now. The upper floor is not tenanted and proven out. And even with Renown Cardio, they used up most of the parking spaces on that little circle, at least in front of them now, with only half the usage. And they just went online back maybe six months ago. So, they're going to have needs, and the whole area is only 50% built out. We cannot support the people that don't have places to park at that unit. And if you do decide to go that direction, my God, make it 30 units, make it 40 units, to where he has room for his snow, and he has room for his cars. And he can put the pool off the circle like everybody else. Put it off, hide it, and make it conglomerate. Do a beautiful job. Send them home and make them redraw it with less units. Excuse me?
I would like to, as a former member of the Planning Commission, you know that parking requirements are based upon not only the unit count, but also the prospective use of those units.
Correct.
So, two units per, two parking spaces per unit does not mean that each unit is going to have two vehicles.
No, but every apartment building in this town, over the last 30 years, has still got people parking on the street because there seems to be a deficient number of parking spaces. But the fact of the matter is, because it's a special-use permit, you can say, "Common sense tells me 180 cars on that couple acres, three acres piece of property is not a great idea." Common sense says that if there's no place to put snow, no place to put cars, you can't go on the street, then that's what the special-use permit gives you the power to do.
But they have arranged for the snow storage. Whether or not it's on the golf course doesn't make any difference. They have arranged for that to happen. I mean, that is a perfectly adequate place for snow storage.
But when that's sold, then it goes with it? And, I mean, if they don't have enough room for snow, they have to move it somewhere else, then. All right, thank you very much.
Well, I'd like to simply point out that half of the units are one-bedroom units. So, you know, it is unlikely that all of those units, all of those one-bedroom units are going to have two cars. They're going to have, half of them will have one car. So, you know, there's a considerable number of car parking spaces that are, as a part of the nature of the dwellings. We have to think about that, too. And it does comply with our parking ordinance. And, you know, we have to take that into consideration.
Did somebody back here want to talk?
You've got an answer to the question.
One last comment, very quickly. Mark Turner, again, for the record. The density at the Parkway Terrace project is 24 units to the acre. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Brenda Whitely again. I would just like to say that, you know, we do live at, we live on GS Richards Boulevard. We built the mixed-use building. And we put two apartments upstairs. And they're both, I think they're right around 3,300 to 3,500 square feet each. I think these apartments are like 700 square feet. And I think that what Carson City is really, really, really lacking is high-end apartments, apartments that are like 1,500 or 1,800 square feet. I mean, and I, that's the thing that bothers me also about this apartment complex, is there are just these little tiny apartments. And it just seems to me that this is a really nice opportunity. If we need an apartment complex in town, why don't we try to get a little bit better quality apartment complex? One that has a little more open space, one that doesn't put the swimming pool on the road, and doesn't have all these apartments. Wouldn't this be a nice opportunity? In my opinion, you're right, by the golf course. I walk to the gym, I walk to Starbucks, I walk to the grocery store because I live right there. And it is true. It's nice, but it's an opportunity to have something of quality as opposed to this high-density that you're just jamming all these people in this three-acre-plus parcel. And that's kind of what, I just think we're passing up a great opportunity for the town to have something of quality as opposed to just one more high-density apartment complex that just, you know, so, that's all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else?
My name is Matt Thomas. When I first heard about this, I was really excited and interested in it, too, because I just graduated college, just moved back here. Couldn't really find anywhere to live in Carson, anywhere that was kind of more upscale like this. I've also talked to many of my friends, too. They can't find anything. They're even living at home right now. If we wanted to find something like this, we'd probably have to go up to Reno to find it. I work in Carson, so I don't really want to move up to Reno and commute down here. So, it's something that definitely interests me. I lived in apartments, last four years in college and stuff like that. So, just kind of hearing some stuff. The last apartment complex I worked at, they offered one parking space per unit, and then they had one extra one. And never had a problem with parking, ever. There was plenty of parking all the time. This apartment complex had 400 units. It was 100% full. Never once ever had a problem with parking. Another thing I heard, too, is about elevators. I've been in many three-story apartment complexes. I've never once seen an elevator in an apartment complex. I've been in lots of upscale apartment complexes, so. But yeah, I'm definitely interested in this somewhere that I'd like to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody, anyone else? Okay, I think we're going to bring it back. And I, go ahead, Mr. Sallier.
Well...
I would like to move for approval. I believe that there is...
I always forget that button. I would tie it around my neck, I think. I think that it is reasonably very nice, affordable housing in a place where we really need it in this city. That's what I think. That's my opinion of it. I've been involved with many apartment projects in my career. And, so, I'm right on Mission Bay in San Diego, for instance. 85 apartment units in a five-story building over a parking garage, and every unit had two parking spaces. There were no other parking spaces we had, except a little bit on the street. Every unit had a beautiful view, has a beautiful view of Mission Bay. I've never been there when I've seen people swarming all over the place. You occasionally see somebody walking through the common areas. That project's been there for an excess of 20 years. And it looks like the day it was built. It's still beautiful. 30 years. It's been there 30 years. I think that this, it's not the same, quite the quality of that project I'm talking about because it has lots of elevators. And for a five-story building, there's no other answer. You've got to have elevators. I still think you need elevators here. But that is not one of the things that I think we should make our decision on. So, with that in mind, because I believe there's a real need for this kind of housing, and it's a beautiful area to do it, I would like to move for approval of SUP-15-077, a special-use permit request to allow multiple-family apartments in a retail-commercial zoning district on property zone retail-commercial, planned-unit development located on GS Richards Boulevard, APNs 007-461-22 and 23, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
I'll second that. Commissioner Sattler.
We have a motion and a second. Susan?
Don't forget the revised conditions and new conditions in the late information.
Yes, the revised conditions.
Along with the revised conditions, yes, included.
Does that second still stand?
I will still second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
One, I think.
Oh, okay.
You're an aye?
It's five to two. Five to two. The motion passes five to two. Because this is a special-use permit, it goes to the Board of Commissioners? The Board of Supervisors?
For the record, this is the final decision on this special-use permit unless appealed within 10 days to the Planning Division. If you have any questions on how to submit appeal, please contact the Planning Division.
Thank you all. Do we have staff reports?
Oh, yeah, we're not done yet, are we?
Oh, no. That's right.
We'll take a two, a five-minute recess.
What do we got?
Oh, we got a public comment, too. You got a public comment afterward. Well, hopefully not. I think it's a little... I don't, I think it's... It's obvious. They're all nuts. I think they're nuts. They're going to have trouble, you know? We all signed, huh? Oh, this is the same hand? Okay. Would you like to sign this?
I'd like to. Can I sign? Any fair...
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to. Can I sign? Any fair...
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to. Can I sign? Any fair...
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Would you like to sign this?
We're going to resume with item G, staff reports.
Very quickly, thank you. And thank you for your time this evening. It was another, it's a long, long meeting tonight, kind of like the old days before the recession. No, just a couple of quick items. So, from items that were previously before the Planning Commission, we did have two appeals from last month for the Lutheran School expansion and playground relocation. That's going to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. And it was appealed by the two adjacent neighbors. And the, we also received an appeal for the MME sign from the applicant, who was still asking for smaller. But actually, as of today, they withdrew that appeal this afternoon, and so that won't be heard. The Planning Commission decision stands. For next month, we'll have another, got a few, got a few items on the agenda. Shouldn't it be, shouldn't it be this long tonight? We have a special-use permit for a five-year review of an existing billboard, another five-year review of a metal storage container, which we must have, they must, the metal storage containers, the metal storage container salesman must have came through town five years ago or something. We have a special use, another special-use permit for a guest house exceeding 75% of the main structure on, for, this is for a guest house specifically, yes.
75%?
On Conti Drive, yeah.
It's going to be stick-built.
Another, it is, it will be, yes, yes. It will be. It is. And that we have another medical marijuana production facility. This is the last one that was approved by the state, that has not come to the city yet. Couple more, still got a couple more on the list. Special-use permit for a new 80-foot-tall wireless telecommunications tower, kind of a stealth narrow, narrow tower with the hidden arrays. It's on the, it says Carson Gaming. That's the Fandango property. It's actually next to the, to the Marriott there. And then finally, we're bringing the special-use permit back for the Adams Foundation, the Curry Street project. That's the big multi-use project that's still needed planning. So, that's coming back. They've acquired the parking lot next to it, so they are going to get their special-use permit and finalize that approval with all the, with all the parking they need.
The hotel or across the street?
For the, the Citibank, yeah, this is the Citibank building. And the parking lot to the south of that, yeah.
The city property.
So, those, so those are the items for next month. We also have a presentation from the Carson River Subconservancy District on low-impact development. So, we got another, quite a few items, again, next month. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Okay. Any Commissioners have anything they'd like to?
Are your restaurants still open?
Okay.
Well, I would just simply say that, after receiving this, you know, there's somebody else appeals the same way I do, and I think it will turn out, in the long run, to be a disaster for Carson City.
You got pretty stamp.
Yeah, look at the stamps. I'm a stamp collector, too. I used to be, a long time ago. It'll turn out to be a disaster in the future, but.
Okay. One more public comment. Anyone? No public comment?
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
A second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. No? Thank you.